Good evening and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting of Tuesday, November 9. As we always do, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance as I call the meeting to order. Actually, I probably need to say that we're just coming out of an executive session and the meeting was already in session. Okay, now we're going to do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we always do, I'm going to go ahead and read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is public comment. We've got someone in studio, and then I think we also have somebody on Zoom, but first, Erin.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kreisos. I'm here tonight in my role as the proud president of Wakefield Education Association. This year has not been without its challenges, but every day our educators pour their heart and soul into their work with our students. They give every ounce of energy to ensure each child, your children, have the support and academic foundation they need to be successful. It is clear that our educators are working as hard as they possibly can to care for our students, support them, and challenge them, and most importantly, to respond whenever they need us. What is unclear is whether we are doing the same for our educators. When asked if our educators feel supported each day, many of our teachers are honestly responding that they are not sure. They cite examples of being excluded from decisions that directly impact their students, their classes. They cite isolation from colleagues and feel dismissed when raising legitimate concerns about initiatives and its impact on student learning. The school committee's role is to work to ensure that Wakefield Public Schools' policies reflect our goals, our shared goals for teaching and learning. But over the past few years, you have excluded the educators from the process. Your role is to support students, families, and teachers. Yet, when the WEA has come to you with concerns last year, you responded with calls for data. The WEA met that demand twice with surveys. Now we are asking for action. We are asking for very little. Ask our opinions about our students. Trust us when we say that our students are struggling, and they are. Hear us when we say we want to be included, and lastly, respect our professional expertise, our boundaries, and our contract. I would like to ask the school committee this evening to commit to listening to our educators. If even one teacher leaves their school day discouraged or isolated, having worked an entire day believing they are ignored, then we have all failed. In the past, the WEA has asked the school committee to meet with WEA leadership to ensure that the teacher perspective is included, for you to show that you value and respect our professional opinions. This invitation has yet to be accepted. Tonight, we are again extending this invitation to the committee at large and sincerely hope that you will accept. No matter how you choose to proceed, we can no longer afford to accept the status quo, not for our teachers and most certainly not for our students. Thank you for your time.
I believe we have a gentleman named Jim Mitchell, maybe, on the Zoom? WCAT, do you guys?
That's correct.
Oh, perfect. Can you open up his microphone? And maybe show a picture of him?
Okay, my mic's on. Should I go?
I guess so. It would be nice if we could see you, but go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Jim Mitchell. I've been a resident of Wakefield for 14 years, and I have two children in the Wakefield school system. Tonight, I wanted to ask about the significant curriculum changes being implemented by the Indigenous Curriculum Task Force and CRT. During the pandemic, due to remote learning, parents have become more involved in their child's education than ever before. Also, during the pandemic, the school committee decided to implement major changes in the curriculum. My request tonight is that the committee provide more transparency for parents in this process. Many parents would like to know specifically what changes are being made to the curriculum and why. Oftentimes, these changes are made behind closed doors, but ideally, this would be an open process. I know there will be regular updates at committee meetings, but these updates should be detailed and full minutes should be provided. Ultimately, I think we can all agree that a greater level of transparency will provide more support for the changes being implemented. So the question is, can the committee provide an ongoing and high level of transparency for the curriculum changes? Also, how will the committee ensure that there is an open process?
Okay. Thank you, Jim, for coming and sharing your thoughts on that. Do we have anybody else on the Zoom for public comment? Okay. I think we'll go ahead and move to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Markham.
I move the school committee to approve the minutes of the September 21, 2021 School Committee Professional Development Workshop and the minutes of the October 12, 2021 School Committee Meeting, and to accept the minutes of the October 14, 2021, and the October 21, 2021 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee Meetings as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Next is my comments, and first, we are going to start with our high school liaisons who have joined us tonight. And, yep, I'm sorry, I keep having to change with my glasses on and off here. Sorry about that. So we have four representatives, two from the class of 2022 and two from the class of 2023. Two of our liaisons are returning for another year, and then we have two new members. So what I thought I would do is hand it over to each of you to kind of introduce yourselves, and I believe that you have updates to give us on how things are going so far this year. So Maggie, because you're a veteran member, I'm going to have you kick it off if you don't mind. So if you can introduce yourself and then give us a little update.
Hi, I'm Maggie Leone. I was here along with Sophia Callahan last year as one of the representatives for our class of 22. So I am a senior this year at the high school. I'm a youth action team leader. I'm in best buddies, and I do run all three seasons. So that's just a little bit about me. So today, I'm just going to update you guys on some of the more miscellaneous, random school news, timely happening, stuff like that. So we did have our National Honor Society induction last week on Thursday, and we welcomed 97 new members into our chapter of National Honor Society. So we want to thank Ms. Delory for her incredible planning to make this event very special for all of our students. It was in person at the Galvin, so that was awesome. We had our homecoming dance on Saturday night, first in a while. It was a great night for everyone that attended. We'd like to thank our senior student government for organizing it and Ms. Nygero and Mr. Hanren for all their hard work. And then lastly, the senior class is running Spirit Week this week. So yesterday was USA Day. Today was Decades Day. Tomorrow is Zoom Day, so formal on the top, like pajamas on the bottom. We don't have any school on Thursday because Veterans Day, and Friday is going to be anything but a backpack. So carry your stuff in like a bucket or something like that, and that's all I have.
Awesome. Thanks, Maggie. Sophia Callahan, I'll have you go next.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I'm also a returning member for the class of 2022. And a little about myself, I'm on the dance team at the high school. I do lacrosse in the spring, and I'm also a part of the Interact Social Awareness Club and the Scholarship Foundation. And I'm just going to talk about some of the academic updates at the school. So the National Honor Society is launching their chapter service for this year, which is peer tutoring. Teachers and students have been giving information about this opportunity, and it's basically students from NHS, helping students of other grades with any academic work or organizational skills or studying skills. NHS advisor, Ms. Delory, has more information on this. And then also, the high school fall conferences will be held on Wednesday, 11/17, and Thursday, 11/18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. These conferences will be held virtually, and Ms. McLeod will be sending out more details about that this week.
Awesome. Thanks, Sophia. So Molly, you're up next. You're a new member this year.
Hi, I'm Molly Baranato. I am part of the class of 2023. In school, I participate in marching band, I run track, and I play lacrosse in the spring. I will be updating you guys on our extracurricular activities, and we have one update, which is the marching band ended their 2021 season with a perfect score at the state championships and a platinum medal with a second-place finish at the New England Championships on Halloween weekend.
Awesome. Thanks, Molly. It's nice to meet you. And then we'll end with Isabella.
Hi, I'm Isabella. I'm a new member this year along with Molly. I play lacrosse at the high school, and I'm also a member of the Black Student Union, and I'm a junior this year. And I have two more things to mention about academics at the high school. So the first term has closed and report cards I pass next week on 11/16. And the guidance department has recently announced an opportunity for WHMS students to take college-level courses for free and earn credits. Classes are through North Shore Community College and take place during after-school hours. Students can get their guidance counselors as soon as possible if interested.
Cool. All right. That was great, girls. Thank you for coming tonight, and it's great to have you. I believe you're going to attend, I think two of you are going to attend like each meeting. Am I remembering that correctly? Okay, so we look forward to having you guys attend our future meetings and give us updates on what's going on at the high school.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to the next agenda item. I wanted to give a very quick update from the tri-board meeting that happened now a couple of weeks ago. More for the public because we were all there. So there was a meeting, I believe it was on the 21st of October, where the town council, the finance committee, and the school committee all get together and start talking about kind of the state of the state from a financial perspective for Wakefield. And we review kind of the assumptions of how things look, how did we think things were going to look, how do things actually look, and what do we expect to happen over the next couple of months leading into next year as we start our budgeting process? And so it's always a really good meeting to get a sense of how things are going in town from a finance perspective. Certainly with COVID, I think the expectation was that things were maybe going to be rocky for a little while. But the good news is that Wakefield has kind of rebounded in a pretty nice way, coming out of COVID, and that the finances look better than kind of expected, which is great for us as we kind of head into budgeting, to know kind of where we stand. And that's really what that meeting is about. It's the third year that we've done it, and it's really just about setting the stage for everybody so that we have a common understanding of what's going on for the community around our finances. So that meeting took place, there was some discussion at that meeting regarding some school rankings that were mentioned by one of the town councilors. Doug is actually going to mention that a little bit later tonight, and we plan to spend a little bit more time talking about that at a future meeting. But it did come up during that, and Doug will kind of address it tonight during, I think probably during the MCAS portion of the agenda. And then the last thing is that we're supposed to have some representatives. Julie Smith-Galvin from the town council and Jen Kelly from Wakefield Municipal Light and Gas Commission are supposed to be on the Zoom. Oh, except that there she is, Julie. Thank you.
Jen Kelly is on her way, so I will start.
Do you want to take us out? Do you want us to?
Do you have something that you could do while we wait for her? I didn't want to hold you up, but you know you have a lot of important things on your agenda.
We could take out of order.
We could do the budget motions, do the payroll and gift motions.
Do we know how far she is? She's leaving now, so like five minutes, 10 minutes. Why don't we let Tim do his facilities update? Because we're probably going to need a couple of minutes. So why don't we do that? Do we have to make a motion to take things out of order? We don't have to, right? We just do it. Okay. So, Tim, sorry to put you on the spot.
I thought I had more time. No problem. So for our facilities update, I'm excited to announce that we will be resuming facility rentals under Board of Health Guidance. Just a few quick mentions of what that guidance looks like, and that can be found on wakefieldpublicschools.org under the District tab and the Facilities tab. Masks must be worn inside buildings at all times. Three feet of social distancing, with the exception of family units. Points of contact must be recorded by renting parties for the purpose of contact tracing, should it be needed. And participants naturally should not be present if exhibiting any COVID symptoms. A list of those symptoms is also included in the guidance. So in addition to that, also, we've released, as of November 1, new volunteer guidance for enrichment programs. That was released internally and shared between school principals and PTO presidents. Those programs will function under the discretion of the principals as they see fit for their buildings.
Tim, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The one in the facility, sorry, I wasn't sure if we were going to take questions. That starts effective immediately, is that correct, the use of facilities?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. And also, just as another point, on wakefieldpublicschools.org, there are a bunch of quick links that'll give you a hand in where to navigate to make those requests. There is a few videos that'll show you how to create an account, and also, it'll walk you through the steps of submitting the request as well, if anyone is not familiar with it or hasn't done it before. And Trudy Conley is a great resource as well. She's been incredibly helpful in making this all transition smoothly. So anybody can reach out to myself or Trudy if they need any help.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Sue.
Tim, I was just curious, in terms of maintaining like the three feet of spacing, give or take, are we offering people like a suggested maximum amount of people, like a maximum head count for a space?
So, yeah, so we haven't set those guidelines specifically. What we need to, you know, we needed to do is to make sure that we are leaving enough space for everybody. But that's, we work with the individual renters on that based on what the size of the space they're renting is and the size of the event they're having. So that's something we'll work out on the details when they send their request.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Do we want to do the gifts now? Kill a little bit more time? Okay. Oh, payroll warrant first. So we're going to move to the budget items, agenda section, and take those two.
So tonight, we just have the payroll warrants. For the month of October, there were three payrolls, and I believe we have a motion to accept.
We do. I move the school committee to approve payroll warrants number 12, number 16, and number 18 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Passes? Okay.
Just getting to the end of the document. Quite long. So do we want to take the gifts individually?
Yes. Well, wouldn't be my recommendation. They're different items. I move the school committee to accept with gratitude the donation of $6,000 from the Wakefield Girls Soccer Booster Club, a stipend for three assistant soccer coaches for the 2021 fall season.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Passes?
I move the school committee to accept with gratitude the donation of $2,500 from the Walton School PTO for the Walton School teachers to purchase supplies for the classroom.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Now that passes.
I move the school committee to accept with gratitude the donation of $325 from the Savings Bank to Wakefield Academy After-School Program to help purchase cornhole boards.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? And the last one.
I move the school committee to accept with gratitude the donation of $2,500 from the Wakefield Boys Soccer Booster Club, a stipend for one assistant coach for the 2021 fall season.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Decision? Discussion? Goodness. Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. All right. And with that, I think we're ready to go back to the report on the energy reduction plan that Jen Kelly and Julie Smith-Galvin are here to speak to us about. Thanks, girls, for coming tonight. Women.
Thank you. You have much more fun than we do improving things like cornhole.
I don't know. Do we also have Kara with us?
Yeah.
Here she comes. There she is. Perfect timing.
So I'll introduce myself, and then we can all maybe go around. So I'm Julie Smith-Galvin, Town Council.
I am Jennifer Kelly. On this project, I'm a town volunteer and citizen, but I'm also on our board, Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. And I don't know if we can.
I'm Kara Goodman. I'm with Metropolitan Area Planning Council, who's been contracted to help with the Green Communities application process.
So we wanted to come to you tonight to give you an update on where we are on the Green Communities application. I don't believe we have briefed this board before, so we wanted to give you a high-level overview and then a bit of a preview of something that is going to require your vote, probably within the coming month or so. So the Green Communities is a state program that is organized through the department. Do we have the slides? Yeah. So that is organized through the Department of Energy Resources. And we can go to the next slide. C A T. Essentially, when you're designated a Green Community, you get a lot of resources from the state to help with things like energy reduction primarily at the municipal level. And in exchange, you make some commitments to the state. There are essentially five categories that you have to comply with before you can make an application. We are essentially through all five of them except one. So the first was zoning for renewable energy, research, generation, or manufacturing, expedited permitting for renewable energy in the town. Those are already part of our existing bylaws, so we didn't need any special action on those. At town meeting, we did pass the third, which was a stretch code for new construction in town. And the fourth is a sustainable fleet policy, which hasn't already come to this body, is coming to this body. And that's essentially replacing existing municipal fleets with energy efficient, with some exemptions for larger machinery. So the next slide shows, we are actually pretty late to this state program. Part of that is because we have a municipal utility, and it took a little while to figure out what the criteria were. So about 80% of the state is already a designated Green Community, which means that we're going to get a lot of the benefits from the lessons of what others have done. And really, what we're doing here is not especially innovative when you look at how, you know, the nearly 300 communities that have already done it. Again, the eligibility requirements, as I said, have to do with efficiency, renewable energy, and efficient vehicles. And what we're really here to talk about tonight, and Jen is really here to talk about tonight with the support of the MAPC, is this energy reduction commitment plan whereby we are looking at all of the municipal buildings and fleet across town. We're coming up with a baseline, and we're going to need to commit to a 20% reduction over five years. That's a plan that we will have to submit to the state. So Jen and the MLD and the DPW have been working really hard on that. And actually, the next slide just shows some of the grants. And so she's going to give you a little bit of an update, and I guess I'll let you do timeline as well.
Sure, that's fine. So, yeah, as Julie mentioned, we've been working on this for a little while, pretty much the entire calendar year. We passed, the stretch energy code was adopted at town meeting in the spring. And after that, we started launching into putting together the energy use baseline for the town. Currently, we're working on the energy reduction plan, and I'll go into more detail on that. And we are also working on getting that efficient vehicle policy adopted. And then once those are done, we'll be applying to the program. So the first step that we basically took over the summer was to implement a tracking tool that pretty much every other community is using in the state. The tool is called Mass Energy Insight. In short, it's called MEI. And basically, it's getting a bunch of our historical data up into that tool at quite a detailed level. So I wanted to say thanks to WMGLD for importing three fiscal years of data at the account level, at the month level, for each natural gas account, for each electricity account, for all of our assets in the town. This included streetlights, and included vehicles, and included buildings, and all different types of things. So this is a quick screenshot of the tool. I know it's too small to see, but I just wanted to give you kind of a view of the interface. There are some separate departments, so I'll call your attention to that. Anyone who's using the tool can see the school department separately, and the schools and all of those school assets are listed within its own department. So that is helpful for you to know. It really is a useful tool in a lot of ways because we can give people permission from different departments to view it, and those individuals can collaborate, looking at the same views of data. There's also kind of standardized reporting interface in the top, which helps kind of direct you to the most interesting views of the data. Some of these things, which I'll call out at a relatively high level tonight, but certainly for a facilities manager or someone who's doing this day to day, they'd be more in the weeds than what we're going to talk about tonight. And it can also kind of foster some discovery of mechanical issues well in advance. So if you're monitoring this on a regular basis, you might find some things that result in maybe higher energy use or irregular energy use, and you might look into it and find an issue that you would then know about further on before something actually happens. So next slide, please. So now we get into some of the data. And we have categorized all of the data by these kind of five core categories. And so the core categories are buildings, vehicles, water sewer and pumping, street and traffic lights, and open space. Open space is typically parks. It can be lighting for ball fields. In this case, some examples from our town is the rockery, the bandstand, things like that. So it's generally not a ton of energy use, which is why you see it's such a small slice. And really, this view shows us something that is very common, I think, for a lot of towns. The buildings are the vast majority of energy use. This shouldn't be a huge surprise, at 73%. It's one of our biggest opportunities also to produce energy. The secondary opportunity being vehicles at around 20%. And together, those two are the vast majority of energy use in our municipal buildings. Next slide. So because buildings are such a big piece, I wanted to drill down into that a bit more. So this goes into focused on buildings, the energy used by fuel. And so one of the cool things this tool does is put two different fuels, reports them in the same units, which is almost never done. You know, sometimes you're looking at kilowatt-hours for electricity, and you're looking at therms or something else for natural gas, and it's hard to relate the two together. This converts it all into MMBTUs, and what you can see when you do that is that natural gas for heat, space heating predominantly, also water heating, sometimes for cooking, is the largest. is the, uh, by large, the largest proportion of energy use in our buildings. And, um, that means that measures like air sealing, weatherization, and heating systems will generate the savings from that kind of, um, fuel type. Uh, electricity is another third and that's, you know, our lighting, things like that, equipment, computers, that kind of thing. Next slide. So now what we want to do is go through our buildings with higher energy use. So what we're going to start by doing is just looking at the total energy use. And this is looking at our baseline year, which is fiscal year 2019. And so what we're doing here is, um, we're currently looking, doing scoping audits of 17, um, of our buildings. We have like 23 buildings. Some of them are like, um, the, like a shack at Nahant, uh, the pit. So we've taken that out. It's not a building that we have a lot of opportunity to address. And what's left are, are larger buildings and ones with greater energy use. So these are the top 10. What you can see probably pretty quickly is that some of our largest buildings are schools and so they have our biggest energy use. And I believe most, if not all of them, are in here. We have seven in the mix. We have a middle school or high school, four elementary schools, and Doyle. And so, um, the other thing you can see is that Wakefield High School has by far the biggest energy use of any of our buildings. And total into, uh, taken altogether, our schools represent 70% of our building energy use in this town. So it's quite a big chunk. Next slide. On the same scale, this just shows the remaining seven buildings, um, and their energy use and what you can, I'm just showing it to show you kind of the portfolio of buildings that we have in here. So we have some public work buildings, uh, town hall. We also have the fire, Greenwood Fire Station, um, and the Abilene Cultural Exchange. Next slide. So next, we want to get into efficiency because the total size and use of the building is not the only thing we want to look at. So what we do is we divide that energy use that we just looked at by the square foot to see that for each square foot, how much these buildings are using. And what we see is a little bit of a different picture. We see some of our mid and smaller buildings actually rising to the top. So what we see here is Bead Library actually coming in, um, with the least efficient, um, numbers, the Civic Center, Public Safety Building, things like that. I will say, it, it is important to kind of think about how each building is used and, and we'll get into more of this when we do the scoping audits. But, um, for example, the Public Safety Building has, is on 24/7 in a way that a lot of other buildings aren't operated. So that's going to have bigger energy use or higher energy use. And in addition to that, it has maybe specialized equipment that other buildings don't have. So that definitely comes into play here. And next slide. So Julie had mentioned renewable energy is another, another category. And one thing we are doing through this tool is starting to track, um, where we have instances of renewable energy on municipal buildings. So we do have one solar install on a municipal building. It was installed in May 2020. It's at the Water Department Garage on Broadway Street. And so this is a picture of that install. Similar to the way we're doing like a town-wide scoping assessment on efficiency, we also did do a relatively high-level look at renewable opportunities on all of our municipal buildings. And really, this building rose to the top as being a really good opportunity for a number of reasons. It has a relatively new roof. Uh, the orientation of the building matters and so it's angled in a way that gets sun, uh, a good portion of the day. The angle, it's relatively flat, which means again, it's getting a fair bit of sunlight. If you look at it in contrast to the building that's right behind us, it, that off to the right, that has a very steep roof, that's more shaded, um, and won't be quite as good. And then there's an absence of trees or shading from trees nearby at this site. And in terms of next steps, um, as I mentioned, we're completing these scoping audits. In the next week or two, we'll be accumulating all of that information and bringing, um, the strategies and the buildings as well that we like to use, um, to, to essentially improve the efficiency in all of our buildings with the energy use and reduce the energy use. We'll bring that back before you, um, review it with you and get your feedback and, and hopefully seek, uh, approval ultimately on the plan. And then, once we get approval, uh, before the end of this calendar year, we would like to apply to that, this program. Uh, if we don't apply by end of year, there is a bit of a gap, um, in time, uh, between when we can actually apply and get funding. It's not to say that we can't pursue, you know, we'll have a lot of information. We certainly can pursue opportunities, but we won't be able to get grant funding to support that until a little bit later on in the process. So we are hoping to do this all before the end of the year. And with that, um, I think we can open it up to questions.
Can I add a question? Is there the longer-term plan to maybe also go into the residential side? You know, we all see Nancy Kerrigan on TV, but obviously because we have a municipal, we're not eligible for that energy utilization assessment. Is the plan to perhaps go ultimately onto the residential side as well?
So we have two things going on in the residential side right now. One thing is building codes, which is really important. So we did adopt the stretch code and so, um, that is helping to make our new buildings in particular more efficient, um, and better buildings. But we certainly can adopt additional provisions on top of that, um, if we so choose as a town. Uh, one thing that's coming up a lot is whether there's kind of a net zero code, which is kind of the, uh, uh, more stricter, uh, building code, um, and, and more stringent than what is in place under the stretch code. Um, the other thing is we do have currently audits. So Wakefield does have audits and rebates for all kinds of, uh, equipment, heating equipment in homes, weatherization, air sealing, all of that kind of thing. So we do have a pretty comprehensive set of, um, efficiency opportunities for existing homes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. As far as the audits go, who is in charge of that? Is that a third-party company?
It is, yes. So, um, W, in our case, W M G L D is part of a larger association, um, that has 20 member towns. And so there is, uh, four economies of scale, some vendors that serve, uh, those 20 towns. So we're essentially going through that association and there's, there are vendors that operate through this program.
Thank you.
I thought I saw somebody over here. Oh, yeah.
Has surveys already been taken place, uh, with fleet vehicles? Like in and around town, not just the school committee, but, or not just the schools, but has a survey already been done for which fleet vehicles?
There's been an inventory of, um, all municipal vehicles. And that will be an inventory that will maintain and update and make sure that it's compliant with the policy, yes.
Do we have any idea how many in the schools exist?
I don't have the list, but I can definitely send that to you. And I don't know whether it's on your agenda, it's part of the fleet policy. It's in there.
So yeah, we need to talk about getting that onto the agenda because we need to, we need to lay it on the table and then we need to approve it, I believe.
Right.
So we need to do that soon if it needs to be done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that around, but definitely.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, and there, uh, I think it's part of this program too. I mean, there's a lot of interest in things like electric buses and, and whatnot and that can all factor into this as well when we get into the Green Communities.
Would that work for us if we contract a bus service? Would that count as the 20%?
So not if, not if they're not town-owned vehicles. I believe in Kara can probably talk to this better. I don't, I am, yes, if we contract out, like snow removal, if we contract out busing, it's not in our fleet.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's not a good idea, but you can't get grants.
It's still a good idea.
And I know that, uh, you know, we've been taking a look at designs for the high school. Are, you know, are we taking a hard look at that as a town from the municipality perspective and?
So we're not far, uh, enough along with that process to have energy reduction numbers because we don't have the square foot of the building and we don't have a lot of detail on the mechanical operations yet.
Sure.
So hopefully we'll get more information of that, as that process progresses. But at this point in time, we just don't have. So, so a lot of our plan will be looking at our existing buildings and seeing how close we can get to that 20% with, um, the other buildings in the mix. And then Kara will help us hopefully try to artfully thread, uh, that gap, if there is one, to try to fit in, you know, what we might intend to do with the high school or what our intentions are there.
Great.
But yeah, there's a bit of a timing, a little bit of a timing issue in terms of that project and the sequence that we're following.
Go ahead, Doug.
So I have two questions. One is, um, do you have any perspective or insight into new high school buildings that have been built in regard to kind of their net zero footprint and how they've performed over time?
So, yes, I would need a little bit more information. We, we'd need to probably talk separately, but what I can say is that the tool has all of the municipal buildings' data in it for the 280 participating towns.
Great.
Which means that we can benchmark our school buildings against the school buildings in 280 other towns in the state.
So we would know if, if there's a new school that's been built and it's been in a net zero footprint based on design, how it's performed over time.
Yes, so we need to work together to kind of identify what, what cases you use ca, or you know, what towns or communities or buildings you'd want to look at, but yes, we do have that information.
And, and I'm just, and my second question is really just in, in regard to the grant. So, um, thinking about the age of some of our schools, thinking about, for example, Greenwood, what would improvements to a school of that age look like?
So, um, I can partially answer that question in that we have already made, uh, I believe, some improvements in the past to Greenwood. So about 10 years ago, we put together, um, a body. I was actually on it at the time to look at it, getting a contract to bring somebody in and do some efficiency work in town. I believe, uh, subject to cross-check with Joe Conway, that the two buildings that came out of that as top priorities were in fact the high school and the Greenwood building.
Yeah.
And I believe they did, um, lighting. I believe in addition to that, they did other measures. And I can get that detail for you. I don't have it tonight, but we do have a list of what they were able to address to date.
Thank you so much.
And then coming out of the scoping study, we'll see if anything else that wasn't addressed could still be addressed at those schools.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Tom.
That's great. Well, first, uh, Jen and Julie and Kara, thank you very much for this. Uh, it's been, um, you know, incredibly, uh, you know, informative. And we knew sort of that this was happening in the background for the last year, but thanks for your, for your leadership in bringing it along this far. Pretty, pretty, pretty aggressively so. Uh, one, one question, the, the 20%, um, you know, identifying opportunities to, uh, 20% energy reduction. Over, over what period of time might the 20% take us? Five years, 10 years? How long might, how long might that take to get to that goal?
So the task is to do it, uh, so the commitment is within five years.
Five years, okay.
In reality, sometimes it does take people a different, a slightly different amount of time to get there. So it's not a mandate.
Sure.
But the intent is that you aim for that and that your plan demonstrates, you know, shows how you will do it within a five-year period.
Well, I would speculate then, right, the opportunities that you're going to share with the town council and the school committee would also help drive, uh, how aggressively we may reach those goals or how, or less than aggressively we may reach that goal, right? So, so that's really something for us to look forward to. I know I'm incredibly supportive of the Green Community effort and, and certainly look forward to your recommendations. Um, you mentioned the end of the calendar year, which is approaching. Do you anticipate, uh, coming, uh, back physically or, or with a presentation before December 31st, um, to seek approval of some kind for, um, these opportunities?
Absolutely.
They are on our agenda for, I believe, I believe the seventh, but it might be the 14th. Whichever meeting we're having in December, they're on the agenda. I think it's the seventh.
Great, well, certainly very much, I, I'll look forward to that. And again, thanks, thanks for your work and your leadership.
I think technically only the superintendent has to sign off on it, but the standard has been that the school committees across the Commonwealth do it. So we want to make sure that you have that opportunity.
Thanks.
I had a quick question. Have you guys done the math? So if you look at the Galvin's output and the current high school's output, and if we just assume that the new high school was going to be as efficient as the Galvin, that doesn't get us to 20% kind of overall when you look across all of our town buildings, does it?
I haven't examined that scenario. I suspect no. Usually it takes a little bit more than that. 20% is not an insignificant amount. And though that building is quite large, I don't think it would quite get us there.
Yeah.
So yeah, I think we do need to do more.
When you see kind of all of the, the buildings kind of lined up, it's, there, there's a lot, there's, it's, it's not just the schools. And the, the high school isn't going to be the, the, um, the end game here. We gotta, we gotta kind of address it across all of the schools.
It's also not going to be an effective energy reduction plan for the state to say, we're building a new building. We don't know the square footage of it or what it's going to use, but that's our strategy. It's just not enough.
Yeah. It can be part of the plan, but not the plan.
Right, it can't be the whole plan.
Got it. And is it safe to assume that you guys are already working with, with Tim O'Brien, our facilities director?
So, um, we are in touch, like he's been in the loop roughly speaking, but we do need to get more in the loop with him.
Okay.
Uh, especially, you know, moving forward at this point.
And he's on tonight, so he's, he's hearing this, which is good. Any remaining questions from the committee?
I just had one more.
Go ahead.
Uh, again, to the, the 20% reduction goal, that's off the baseline of 2019?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, and I will say when we looked at, uh, 2019, 2020, and 2021, the energy use was actually very consistent for all three years. So it's not, we, we were actually kind of surprised about that. We thought in a COVID year, things might look a little different. They did not, so there's pretty good evidence that that is in fact our baseline and it doesn't fluctuate all that much.
Let's just add that the vocational school does not count either as a, as a municipal building. Though we are, you know.
One twelfth.
We're encouraging them not to.
One twelfth credit for the vote.
We're hoping they'll be energy efficient as well.
Okay, so we'll see you guys back here in a, in a month, I believe.
Yes, you'll see us. We just, we didn't want to just come with a vote. We wanted to give you some context before we come back for votes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing on many fronts.
Okay, so back to the agenda. Superintendent Lyons, your remarks and your agenda items?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, good evening, everybody. So just an administrative update, some comments. Just a quick note on, um, just some information regarding COVID. So number of cases so far this week, we have 18 students and one faculty member. It looks like those numbers will come down or we're anticipating they're going to come down because some of those, um, students in isolation are supposed to be coming out of isolation. So our numbers tomorrow will be kind of hovering around that number, uh, but we're anticipating that they will go down. Uh, the numbers in quarantine this week are 66 students and one adult. Um, we've been averaging about 80 to 100 tests administered for test and stay every week. And so that is, um, a number that's an important reference because as we are using test and stay, it allows students, um, to, to be a close contact, test negative, but to also stay in school. So we greatly appreciate that. Uh, we also want to just remind parents that if their children are in test and stay, um, they should not be, uh, participating in after-school or evening events, right? So if you're a close contact and you're tested in school during the day, you, you probably want to be safe just to make sure that you go the full length of time to make sure that you are not negative because you can test positive up until the fifth day, right? And so in the first few days, you might not be symptomatic. You might feel great, um, you might think, okay, I'm good. But we've had a few students that on day five have tested positive. So to be on the safe side, our best advice is to just kind of hunker down and hang in there. And, uh, you know, if, if you continue to test negative, you'll be all set and you'll be back on your regular schedule before you know it.
That's a volunteer, it says so. It's not as if we're going to institute a policy.
I didn't hear you, Mike.
I'm sorry, we're not going to institute a policy where if you do go to test and stay, you can't, we're going to, it's sort of a voluntary.
There is no policy, this is just gentle guidance.
Got it, gotcha, thank you.
Right, this is just gentle guidance. So just, um, some other kind of announcements.
Doug, can I ask you about one other thing?
Of course.
Do we have any sort of an update on the vaccination rate with the high school in particular?
It's coming up next.
Oh, sorry, sorry, wait, yeah, sorry.
So, um, Anthony Choi, that our director of our Board of Health, um, couldn't be here this evening. Um, he did let us know that they're planning on a vaccination clinic, uh, for five to 11-year-olds at the end of November. Um, they're trying to get it sooner, but they're in quite a long queue to get vaccines and that the, and that the first kind of organizations that are getting vaccines are pediatricians and pharmacies. So it's kind of tough to compete against those, those two spaces. Um, so as soon as they can get vaccine, they will in fact have a clinic. So if they can do something sooner, they will. So that's, that's where we are there. Yeah.
Are they going to be requiring, um, birth certificates or something for these young kids to verify age?
Yeah, I, I don't know yet, Amy.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know what they will require yet.
Okay.
Um, and I guess that's the beauty of going to your pediatrician is because they have your records and they know who you are.
Right.
Um, and I don't know what pharmacies are requiring.
Okay.
So that's a great question. I think we can update that as soon as we know it.
Okay. Just, uh, we, if we hold the. Okay. Just, we, if we hold the vaccination clinic, are we then responsible? If somebody were to bring that child and lie about the child's age?
Yes.
And something were to happen to that child because they shouldn't be getting the vaccine at that age, would be, we be liable, or is that something that, who would be liable in that situation, if anyone?
You're asking me, you got me. I don't know who would be liable. Would it be our third-party vendor who we would be contracting?
Okay.
Board of Health possibly? I, I don't know. That's a great question. I don't know.
I just know there's a lot of people chomping at the bit.
You go really fast. I can't, it can't come up.
What's that?
I said, you go really fast.
I do go really fast. Sorry. I do.
Going right to the liability piece now.
Right. There's no, yeah.
No.
Right. Okay.
All right. Other questions? Yeah, Mike?
High school rate? High school vaccination rate?
High school vaccination rates were at about 77%.
So it hasn't changed much.
And, and are not, we haven't changed a whole lot with our faculty. We're, we're getting more information in. I will tell you that no one is, is more eager to have our high school adults, if you choose to, and students, if you choose to, to be out of masks at the high school level, and I think all the personnel that are here at the high school. So I, I think kids are feeling ready, adults are feeling ready, but we gotta see where, see where the mandate is going and see what we get. So there'll be more information forthcoming on that. Yes, Stephen?
Do we have dates for a flu clinic?
I do not have dates for a flu clinic, no.
Okay.
So we've had two that have just passed.
Yep.
But not, no, I don't have any new dates.
Okay.
So other, just announcements and updates. I just want to just say a word to our Dolbear family, the Bebo family, that just had kind of a tragic passing. And I just want you to know that, I want to thank the faculty and staff over there and the administration for the support that they've provided to their faculty member and to the students. And, and so, and please know that you're in our thoughts and prayers, and if we can do anything to support, please don't hesitate. And TJ, I know you're on the call, and, and thank you very much for your work over there. I also want to let the community know, or let the school committee know, there was an accident last Friday morning in front of Woodville. We had a gram that was dropping off, and, and she had fallen and, you know, dislocated a finger and had a cut. And, and I want to thank Jamie, let me just, I just wanted to look at his name, Nadworny. Jamie is an EMT in Revere, and by the time anyone get out, by the time our nurses get out there, he had the whole thing under control, you know, and he just, they were, parents were just wonderful. But to Jamie, thank you so much for jumping in. He had just gotten off work, or so he thought he got off work. But he was just really terrific. So special thanks to him, and, and thank you to the faculty and staff over there that just did a great job during that time. And so other information, WEF got together last night to approve grants for teachers. And so they had about $35,000-ish worth of grants, and or maybe a little bit more with, with just about $35,000 to spend. So that grant information will be sent out to faculty and staff very soon. I also want to let the, the community know and school committee know that the high school faculty and staff and administration have been working diligently with SMMA, our architectural firm, and on our, on our kind of building and our visioning. Our, we call it programming and academic visioning. So, so what we do is we get together, it's a facilitated conversation. We've spent about probably eight hours total so far. There's been teams that have been in to assess the building. And so that, that, those kind, that work is happening really every day, every week. We have a standing meeting where we get together with our project management team to review the progress and the work that, that will happen each week. So we are on track and we are making progress in that space. And tomorrow evening, there will be a Zoom meeting to discuss, that is hosted by our permanent building committee, that will be happening via Zoom to just discuss the educational visioning process and the progress that we are making, right? So I also want to let school committee know that the NIASC accreditation team, so much time has passed. If you remember NIASC, you know, a couple of years ago. So our, our accreditation at the high school was downgraded because of the facility. We are still in that space, but we are moving forward and providing them all the information that they need in regard to the curriculum that we use, our schedule, our teaching and learning model. And so that is actively happening, which is just another thing on the plate of the administrative team and the faculty leadership. So that's, that's a quick, I also want to just say congratulations to our athletic teams who qualified for postseason play. We had volleyball, field hockey, boys and girls soccer. Our girls team actually won the league. Congratulations to them. Swimming, boys and girls cross-country, the boys' cross-country team won the league. Cheer and dance are also going to postseason play. And several students this week will be signing national letters of intent to participate in college athletics. And Brendan Kent does a really nice job with that. They set up a table, it's videoed, you know, it's like, a little like ESPN where the student is selecting a hat, you know. We're very proud of our athletes and pleased that, that we have gotten in such a, an almost, you know, pre-COVID-like season. So it's pretty exciting. So we're pleased about that. So before I turn it over to our curriculum coordinators and Karamoro to talk about MCAS, I just want to just share a little bit of information that I think is an important piece, right? So there, with the data that has come out with MCAS, so we're going to be looking at the 2021 MCAS data. So there have been several qualifiers that have been released with this information. And the qualifiers are important because they want this to, to be understood that the data that has been released is diagnostic information, right? Is to be used for diagnostic purposes and, and not necessarily for a tool to compare, you know, prior scores and past scores, or one class to another, or one school to another, for that matter, right? So if, if you recollect, last year, the number of tests were cut down. Students participating were cut down. Also, how students participated, whether you were at home or whether you were in school were different. So the, and also the preparation that students had to take the test varied greatly depending on what schedule you were in. So, so this information, we look at as, we think it's important information, but we just want to be clear that this is a, for diagnostic purposes and for us to understand what students need, and we will use that information and make decisions for our students. So with that, I'd just like, I'd like to turn it over to Kara.
Everyone, so this presentation tonight is, is broken up into two parts. So I'm going to kind of just share what those two parts will be and then give some, opportunity for some introductions because we have a lot of people here to support this work tonight. So the first part of our presentation is going to be our MCAS overview from spring 2021. And for that part of the presentation, I'd like to introduce members of, of our curriculum coordinator team. So curriculum coordinators, when I say your name, if you can just unmute and say hello, so you ping up for the committee. All right. So we'll start at our elementary level. We have Lisa Azarito, our humanities curriculum coordinator.
Hi, everybody.
And then we have Valerie Drynan, our elementary STEM curriculum coordinator.
Hey, everyone.
Secondary level, we have Joanne Marks, our science curriculum coordinator.
Good evening.
We have Margaret Messier, our ELA curriculum coordinator.
Hi, everyone.
And we have Lindsay Moska, our math curriculum coordinator.
Hi, everybody, and good evening.
And then for the second part of our presentation, to go over our school improvement plans, Shannon Blacker, our principal of the Doyle Elementary School, had a, had a family obligation to attend to tonight. But in her place, we're so fortunate to have Katie Dolan, one of our teachers at the Doyle Elementary School, to help us with that piece tonight.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you so much for coming, Katie. Next, we have Tiffany Back, the principal of the Greenwood School.
Hey, everyone.
We have TJ Liberty, principal of the Dolbear School.
Hi, everyone.
Brian Schmidt, principal of the Walton School.
Hi, everyone.
And our other three elementary principals are going to help cover the Woodville School as Matt Carter is, is also out on, on family leave. At our secondary level, we have Megan Webb, principal of the Galvin Middle School.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, took me a minute to unmute.
That's okay. And then we have Amy McCall, principal of Wakefield Memorial High School.
Hey, everybody.
I think I got everybody. If I didn't speak up, I think so. All right. So we will just jump right in. So just to set some context for tonight, I wanted to pause right here on this curriculum leadership structure. I think this is a, we presented this structure to you in the past to talk about the importance of the role of curriculum coordination across the district. So Doug provided the disclaimers about tonight's MCAS results, but, but even prior to COVID, I think, you know, as Doug and I started our administration together, MCAS drives a lot of questions. And I think every day we see, you know, the wonderful things happening in our classrooms, with our teaching staff, with our students, but questioned, you know, as a district, how we were presenting on MCAS as a whole. Definitely pockets of growth and areas to celebrate, but I think, you know, the moves that we've been trying to make have, have prompted us to try to strive for continuous improvement in how we're reflected publicly. So really, just to break it down, MCAS being a standards-based test, one of the things that is, is an important priority is to ensure a consistent and organized approach to instruction from K to 12. And I think part of the rationale behind this leadership structure was to ensure that consistency and dig a little bit more into the coordination piece. This is largely building on what past administrator, administration has started. But I think with leadership turnover, you know, some gaps in time, roles and responsibilities maybe not being clear, that can lead to gaps in curriculum. So, so this really represents a priority of our administration to ensure that we have content experts leading the work of standards-based curriculum K to 12. We focused a lot on team building, both at central office, at the building level, and with our curriculum coordinator team. And also, over the past couple of years, have brought forward to you updated job responsibilities with relation to the curriculum coordinators, our curriculum liaisons, our department coordinators. And most recently, our elementary team is working to revise and revamp the instructional leadership teams to really just show our priority to curriculum instruction. I think the mindset behind this is, is that our teachers have a lot on their plates. They're trying to meet the needs of a wide variety of learners. If the what behind what they do, what they're teaching, grade level to grade level to grade level, can be consistent, organized, and guaranteed, it kind of takes a, a piece off their plate. And that's where our curriculum coordinators come in and help to guide that work and to support our teachers who then in turn support our students. So I just wanted to set the context for tonight that, you know, while there are a lot of disclaimers to this year's MCAS, we've been analyzing MCAS data in Wakefield since we've started. We've been chipping away. We've been prioritizing. And this idea of curriculum coordination, K to 12, has been, has been a top priority to help support that improvement. So I will.
Can I just question?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we did have a parent ask a public comment about curriculum. If a parent had a question, could they approach any of the coordinators with their question?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But this, this view doesn't show who belongs and what, so they wouldn't know where to go. Is there any way we could fill in names and put this up on the public school's website?
Absolutely. So that is, the website is an area of growth. One of the things that we've talked a lot about. We have big ideas for the website in terms of just a whole curriculum instruction, you know, detailed section of the website, which would do just that. It would show, you know, who are at the elementary level as a point person for different subject areas. You know, what we're working on for professional development, our scope and sequence for our curriculum, what resources we're using. All of that information we have at hand and can freely share it with parents. But right now, it's a work in progress in terms of having a hub to really just easily access that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I mean, we've gone over the structure. I just wanted to, again, just reinforce just this, this importance of, of having this big picture lens to, again, promote collaborate, teacher collaboration and consistency level to level.
Kara?
Yeah.
For the committee, could you just explain beneath the assistant superintendent, who are Unit A members and, and also classroom teachers?
Absolutely. So the, really, minus the K to 12 PE and wellness director and, and K to 12 fine and performing arts director, the entire structure is Unit A. So our curriculum coordinators are part of Unit A. They're nonevalutive. They're supporting teachers through coaching, through leading PLCs and department meetings, participating on instructional leadership teams, and really just kind of trying to be as hands-on as possible. And the coaches as well. At the elementary level, this is a newer structure with our humanities coach and our STEM coach. And then the instructional leadership teams at the elementary level. What's new this year is that we felt it was really important to kind of come back to the purpose of those teams and prioritize them, what the focus areas were that are largely around curriculum instruction, and having our teachers to support this work. So it was really posted as a stipend position, an application process, for people who really want to be part of this work. And that's a wide representative, representation of teachers across the elementary level from different subject areas and disciplines.
I'm sorry, does each school have their own instructional leadership team or is it district?
Yep. So each school has their own instructional leadership team. The number of members depends on the size of the school. Walton and Greenwood have, you know, smaller numbers because they're a smaller school. Dolbear and Woodville are bigger. And then at the secondary level, the structure right now is that the curriculum liaisons and department coordinators make up the I L T with curriculum coordinators and the administration. So the goal is to really provide these content experts district-wide whose job it is to stay current in terms of curriculum and instruction, to participate with other districts in job alikes, to learn what's new and what needs to be looked at by subject area, and to help guide our teachers in their work and to help be partners to the principals as instructional, as part of instructional leadership at the building level. So I just wanted to, again, just review the structure. We have curriculum coordinators here tonight to dig in a little bit more. But I just wanted to, to stress the point that, you know, we're, we're continuing towards improvement. We're continuing towards, you know, our public representation. We have a lot going on, but we think that we have some ideas of how to improve moving forward.
So I'm going to transition right now to the next slide, and Lindsay Moska, I believe, is going to jump in with Val Drynan on this slide.
Great. Thank you so much, Kara, and thank you to the committee for having us. We, as a team, I think, always appreciate the opportunity to talk about the hard work and dedication of the teachers in Wakefield Public Schools, and always love talking about data and teaching and learning and the projects and issues that teachers are working on. So thank you so much to the committee for having us. You know, I think that Doug really summarized the differences between the data we looked at in 2019 and 2021 really well in his introduction. You know, I just wanted to reiterate before we get into looking at that data that the real tenet of MCAS 2021 was that it was a non-standardized testing environment to take a standardized test. And so really, that was the conditions across the state. As Doug said, you know, we did not have MCAS in 2020. There's inconsistent school experiences due to COVID-19 and various schedules that districts needed to implement in order to meet safety guidelines. K to eight did not take the full test. They took about a half a test randomly assigned. Student growth percentages were calculated completely differently, and accountability scores were not produced by DUSI this year for 2020 or 2021. And so a lot of the elements that we talked about as a team in the 2019 MCAS report are really not going to be things that we can discuss because, one, they're not available, but also a lot of them don't apply. And so as we kind of get into this, I think, kind of, as Doug said, that framing is really important, thinking about how we use this data.
Next slide, please. Um, oh, sorry, Val, those ones.
No, it's okay. So just to, you know, build on what Lindsay said here. So we're, the next two slides that we're about to show are the math data for grades three to eight on this slide. And the next slide will be the slide for grade 10. So these two slides just show the overall achievement data, which, as you can see here, are on par with pretty much, pretty much on par with the state, maybe a little bit better in some areas. But one of the things that we wanted to really point out in this when we were looking at the data ourselves was that this isn't a new pattern in the data from what we presented in 2019. So, and, and as expected, you know, the, with what Lindsay said to the change of the test, right? So there was change in the test the past year, and in grades three through eight, there was only one test session for students. That was one of the changes that they made to limit testing time during the pandemic. So the data is. So the data is comparable at the state, district, and school level, but it's also important to note that individual student data may vary more than usual compared to previous years, because they did only take one section of the test, as Lindsay had shared. So one of the other pieces of information we wanted to highlight here was that as every district had to do last year, we had to prioritize standards due to the nature of shorter days during the pandemic and in-person learning time. So as expected, in the data you would see in our item analysis, we did not do as well on things that were not prioritized and did pretty well on things that were prioritized. So for example, just one example here that we pulled was in grade five, we focused on place value and powers of 10, and scored 20% higher than the state on that item, but then if you look at the geometry item, where we didn't focus on geometry standards, there was a triangle classification question where we scored 17% lower than the state. So basically, the summary of that is, you know, we did well on the things that were taught last year, and there's still room for growth in, in other areas. Next slide, please.
Val, can I, can I just jump in just on a structure?
Yes.
The way we've structured the presentation is to go by content area and then open it up to questions to committee after that. So we'll go through math and then open up to the committee if you have any questions. Thanks, Val.
No problem. So in grade 10, the difference is they did take the entire test, and, you know, the, there was not a significant difference in the percent passing from previous years because they normed the test to be that way, because nobody wanted to punish students for not allowing them to graduate during a pandemic, right? So that was one of the, one of the differences in the three to eight versus the grade 10 achievement. And I think that was all the points we wanted to hit on for those slides, right? Lindsay, did I miss anything there before you jumped to the next?
Yeah, I think just back with the previous slide, thinking about the overall, the MCAS results, you know, other things that as a curriculum team we've been looking at with teachers is some of our subgroup data, and you know, I think, not surprisingly, given the pandemic and everything that we've learned about how that impacted different students in our schools, there are big achievement gaps in some of our subgroups, with some of our students in special education, our English learners, and other high need students in our schools, and so it's something that, you know, we're really focusing on and we'll talk a little bit about when we talk about action steps, but it's certainly on the minds of all of our educators and on us for how these interventions and recovery plans are focusing on our students who were impacted the most as well. So while we are not trying to focus on comparing to other districts, we did want to kind of highlight just a little bit, because the questions always come up, is if we don't talk about how we do compared to other districts, it's, people ask the question. And so as a general overview, you know, we really wanted to talk about what kind of districts, you know, does the state generally look for us to compare to and what does it mean about how we're doing, just as a, as a school community as a whole. And so the slide that we're looking at right now is actually grade 10 math data from 2021. And the towns listed at the bottom are the 11 towns that the state has most recently identified as being most similar to Wakefield, and they identify those DART districts, which is the District Analysis Review Tools. By size of your district, percentage of students who are English learners, low socioeconomic status, and students with disabilities, and so they're trying to match districts that have kind of similar demographics and size to Wakefield. And so some of these towns, you're like, wow, like, what do we have to do with Canton or with Walpole? But really, it's some characteristics that sort of make us more similar to them rather than just proximity. And so you can, you can see here that Wakefield scored pretty similarly to most of the towns here in, in grade 10 math. You know, we're very close to a lot of those results, you know, I think kind of alluding to some of the questions that were asked earlier, comments made, you know, it's not, it's not where we want to be in comparison to these districts. We know that there's work to do, and the reason why we bring this up is not because we think that the 2021 data is really the best indicator of how we're doing compared to other districts, but because these patterns were the same as, as what we saw in the 2019 data and for a few years previous. And so, you know, we're really excited about the work we're doing to make progress on that and to kind of reboot a lot of the initiatives that were in the works when a lot of them went on hold in pandemic schooling for, you know, purposes of making that as good as we could for our students. Next slide, please. And again, this often, this is the three to eight data, which we are faring a little bit less well compared to our DARTs, but again, it's something that we're aware of and a pattern that has continued over the last few years, and something that we're certainly considering when we think about curriculum changes, support for teachers, initiatives for intervention in professional learning for our teachers, for sure. Next slide, please. This one, we really wanted to just show, because when we don't show, our immediate neighbors, folks always ask, and so really, in the middle sex league, I think the story really told by, by these graphics is a story of a socioeconomic divide in the towns that are in the middle sex league and kind of what the median income is and in what, what the kind of demographics are socioeconomic-wise in those towns. And I think that it, it's, it's clear based on these different factors that these are not the towns that we are, you know, necessarily, it's not a level playing field in terms of trying to compare our achievement. But again, this is similar patterns that, that we've seen over the years for that grade 10 math, and then the next one's three to eight math. Next slide, please. So Val, do you want to start with talking about the next steps?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
All right, so as Kara and Doug have already mentioned, there's been some restructuring at the elementary curriculum leadership level, so one of these next steps that directly applies to our math implementation is the addition of the STEM coach. So that's allowing us to provide more support across the elementary schools. And then in addition to that, we have an implementation team that's been formed, which was part of our, our recommendations in the report we shared with you all back in the spring for the math curriculum resource adoption. So our, our implementation team has teachers spanning all grade, sorry, all schools and grade bands across the district to monitor the progress, problem solve, and determine supports that are working and additional supports that may be needed. In addition to that, you know, we're, like I just said, we're implementing a new curriculum, which is a huge undertaking, and the teachers are working really hard to learn new structures and routines using the universally designed materials that were adopted. So these were designed to meet the needs of all of our students, and in addition to that, we have collaboration and classroom routines that are embedded in the curriculum that are helping to rebuild skills and rebuild stamina to help students be competent problem solvers. To support the teachers in this implementation, we have our half-day PD days that include a mix of PD that is provided by the IM curriculum writers, and then also with a mix of time for district-level teams to collaborate and apply the knowledge from PD. We've been gathering feedback from teachers as well and using that feedback to make adjustments in this PD, and are excited to have our implementation team in place to continue that work as well.
I would say that some of the, some of the pieces that we were started in the pandemic in terms of district-wide collaboration and common scope and sequence and structures are really benefiting us in this, in this year as well, because while we're really focused on making sure that our students are getting to their grade level priorities this year, we're also wanting to make sure that they get these just-in-time interventions so that we can sort of cover more this year, you know, than we did last year and kind of start to recover and get kids caught up to speed, which has really been recommended by the Department of Education to be doing just-in-time support, sort of not going back and teaching students, say in fifth grade, things from fourth grade, but kind of giving them just-in-time interventions to make sure that they're meeting their grade level standards. And so some of those structures from the past have been really beneficial, both in curriculum implementation, but also in planning and collaborating together as we move forward, thinking about this MCAS data and the patterns that we've seen and the improvements that we want to make.
Great, thank you. The way this is presenting, I can't really see you, Val and Lindsay, so if I'm missing cues, just let me know, but I think we're good on this slide. I'm going to just open it up.
We're good, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions related to math to the committee.
I guess I have an overall question, Kara, if that's okay? So, yeah, I get 2019 to 2021, it's really hard to compare the two, it's been different worlds, there's no doubt about that, but the comparison of ourselves to other towns, particularly those that they've deemed like Canton and some of those, you could say, they're having the same, they've had to deal with the same thing that we've had to deal with. So one question I had, and it's, you know, it's probably a question for later, is how we compare to, let's say, Canton now versus how we compare to Canton in 2019? Because it appears that we're on the lower end of any comparison, you know, in the middle sex league, you look at Woburn and Watertown, we're above them, but if you look at the other comparison, we're, we're at the bottom end in, in math. And so I'm just sort of curious if that's a fair way for us to compare, if there's some variability that we need to be aware of.
And Lindsay and Val, feel free to jump in. You know, again, I think presenting MCAS this year is challenging, but the reason that we chose to talk about the areas that we think are needed to improve upon and how we're digging into the information is that we have seen that the trends have been kind of consistent even pre-COVID with where we were landing in comparison to DART districts. So, you know, so like I said, this year isn't fair, but I think we have to, we've been asking similar questions over the last couple of years in terms of, you know, where, where we, kind of where do we need to target? Because we see, you know, all of the great things happening in our classrooms every day, through our teachers, our students, our resources, but what are the areas that we need to refine and target to help boost how we're presenting? Lindsay and Val, is that fair? If you want to jump in again, I can't really see you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, there you are.
You know, I would kind of just add, add to that Kara, that, you know, I remember I was, I was new in, in fall 2019, looking at data from spring 2019 and presenting to, to the school committee, and we were so excited about the initiatives, you know, we actually used a lot of that MCAS data and those results in kind of how we compare to similar districts as part of the data in our curriculum review report as to, you know, what was the impetus and the need to really analyze what we were doing in our mathematics classrooms K to 12? And it's, it's not that we're not doing great things and that we haven't been really working so hard to really meet the needs of students, I think it's a matter of working really, really hard, sort of in the direction of the standards, a little bit more aligned is going to get us there, kind of really prioritizing the conversation that, you know, we're not trying to teach to a test, but we want our students and our families and our schools to really understand that it's an important representation of our very best work that we're doing. We want our kids to kind of perform to the best of their ability, you know, when they go to take that test, and in order to have them prepared to do that, you know, it's kind of talking about some things, a little bit about preparation and comfortability with with the test, kind of prioritizing standards that we know are repeatedly assessed on MCAS. And really, this year, in all the initiatives we have going on, as well as trying to support students recovering and back in school full-time, it's really about rebooting a lot of the initiatives that we had planned fall 2019 to get going and kind of starting fresh on that track so we can kind of right that ship and make sure that our results reflect the really high-quality things happening in our classrooms and the hard work that teachers are doing.
Thanks, Lindsay. Any other questions related to math before we move on? Sure, absolutely.
I was just going to say, in listening to the presentation where it said that sort of the data looked very reflective of what you had also seen in 2019, that what I would maybe see in that is that as communities did, like everyone sort of rose and fallen at the same rate through the pandemic. So I think I was maybe surprised to see it, there wasn't more fluctuation in that. And then the, the other question is, I know that we've instituted sort of, as, as was alluded to, trying to align across our schools, kind of came about as the pandemic went through and we did the remote educating, so that maybe we'll get better alignment there, but how, how long do you think till we can sort of assess what the rollout of the new math curriculum has sort of done? Like, I don't know if there's a, a standard, like, oh, this will take two, three years, five years to see, you know, sort of data sets that we can sort of bench against?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we want to, Val and Lindsay, I feel like if you, you're, you probably want to jump in there, but, and I think we need to be reasonable in terms of a couple of different things. First of all, that, you know, we needed to do this work, this started pre-COVID, we needed to pace it differently, we needed to time it differently, we needed to ensure that we were being respectful of the conditions. We revamped our curriculum review process, but, but, you know, I know a lot of people will talk about this is not the year for a new initiative, but we felt like this was work that just couldn't wait. You know, we had the information that we'd gathered, it was a very teacher-centered, student-centered process that we felt like, that we felt needed to happen this year, and that's why we have prioritized most of the time that we have dedicated to professional development to this launch. So, you know, I say that, Val and Lindsay, feel free to jump in too, just knowing that, like typical timing might be faster, but I think we need to just be, be mindful of when we're launching this implementation.
Sure.
Lindsay and Val, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I would just, you know, just add on that, you know, I think that at, when we look at our internal data, like with our I Ready Benchmark data and our Common Assessments, you know, we're really closely monitoring things at the student level for, you know, this, this whole year, you know, and we're getting feedback from teachers, and, you know, our teachers really know best how students are learning and growing as they're looking at these, this math program and the, the math that they're teaching in their classroom. I mean, I think by the end of the year, we're hoping to see, and you know, you know, more students on grade level and kind of doing well on our internal benchmark assessments. When we see MCAS next year, you know, we're obviously hoping to see improvements, but I think to Kara's point, you know, like our vision for mathematics, teaching, and learning, what we really hope is, is a bit of a five-year plan. I expect to see lots of improvement every year as we go along, but the end game is not June 2021, you know, as we're really, like Kara said, biting off small chunks as we go, it's instructional practice changes, it's material changes, it's scope and sequence changes, and the kids are struggling being back in school full-time from a pandemic. And so teachers are juggling a lot right now, and we are so proud of the work they've done so far early on this school year, and we are, you know, our implementation team, as well as Valerie, myself, are really closely monitoring supports teachers need, as well as progress students are making, you know, we expect to see a gradual increase in this performance year over year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
When we, when we looked at the math curriculum, and then you look at the data and the MCAS scores, but is there any correlation for kids that might struggle with comprehension? Because I feel like, especially what, what I've seen in the grade four, that illustrious math is, there's a lot of reading to solve those problems, and I didn't know if we were looking at as a district, like the student, if they're not comprehending, they're going to not do well in math at the same time. I didn't know if that's something we're watching.
Well, I think, I think something to talk about is just the universal design of the program. So Val, do you want to jump in, so that was more of an elementary question?
Yeah, so, yeah, so as Kara said, there's some universally designed supports built into the program, which means there's entry points for students that are at all levels that can include things such as reading a question aloud, right? We've had a lot of conversations about that at the K1 level, where, you know, they're not reading yet, so we need to read the questions aloud for them. I think in addition, one of the things to keep in mind is that the math standards are very language-heavy, so it is something that is, that we are very aware of at, at the elementary level specifically, and that we talk about a lot in order to support, in order to make sure we're providing the appropriate supports for students to access that data. I think we also have a great opportunity right now with the restructure of the elementary team. Myself and Lisa work closely with Margery and Michelle, the STEM and humanities coach, coaches, so the four of us have been talking a lot about these overlaps in the different content areas across the elementary school in general, across all four content areas. So it is on the radar, and we are paying attention to the supports that need to be in place, because you're not wrong in that it is language-heavy in, because the standards are very language-heavy. So we are, we are paying attention to that as well and figuring out support to, for that.
Yeah, I would add to that, that it's been a concern at the secondary level as well, but to Valerie's point, the, the expectation in the standards for nationally, both Common Core and the Massachusetts State Standards, that, that students are problem-solving, not just calculating. And so what that comes down to is that the kinds of questions that are being asked on MCAS are actually language-rich as well, and it's not just being asked to do a calculation, but to solve problems and to understand a situation. And so, you know, these materials that students are engaging with and that we are, you know, supporting teachers to help them, you know, raise the bar for students in sort of processing this math language is really important, because that will help them meet the standard of which they're being assessed.
Yeah, I think even the English one, it's a similar sort of a phenomenon that we're seeing in the math one, so that would make sense that if we're having some challenges or in the bottom end of comprehension in English, it's going to affect math. The one that I thought, saw we did better in seemed was science. We seem to be better as a comparison in science in general, but, but you're right, bad timing on rolling this out. I remember when, when Val and Tiffany came to present this, I was overwhelmed with how very impressive, it's just, we just need a little time.
Yeah, so I agree with that, absolutely. All right, so if it's okay, I'm going to switch gears to ELA. And to present our ELA, again, just trying to take the K to 12 lens, we have Lisa Azerito, our Humanities Curriculum Coordinator at the elementary level, and Margaret Messier, our five through 12 ELA Curriculum Coordinator. Oh, Lisa, I think you're muted still.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm going to get us started off, and I will.
I'm going to get us started off, and I will talk a little bit about the beginning of this, which is three to eight. So I'll talk a little bit about third and fourth grade, and then Margaret's going to hop in for five to eight and the 10th grade. A lot of similarities, as mentioned, with, with the math scores. Our overall achievement data is very similar. We have more students that were meeting expectations than the state. And this was a different test in terms of how many sessions there were and structure than in years past. And also, as mentioned, Desi had identified prerequisite content standards to focus on last year. We were lucky to have time for teachers to work together across the school. So we did have consistency across the four elementary schools within the scope and sequence and the priorities that they were working on and student experiences. So in ELA, we did well on the standards and the concepts that were prioritized and taught last year. Just a few examples of that, in grade three focused a lot on main idea and retelling and also studying characters. And those were areas that we did quite well and in higher than the state. In grade four, character work as well, but also comparing across text, so synthesizing information from multiple texts, which is pretty complex work. And they did pretty well in that, better than the state. Writing, particularly language standards, the scores were lower than we would like. They're not significantly low compared to the state at all, but it's just an area that we know we need to focus on more to support our students. So to summarize, for three and four, a lot of good instruction last year. The teachers were phenomenal. A lot of things were really good, and we now know what we need to work on moving forward. So I'll let Margaret talk a little bit about five to eight.
Lisa, can I just jump in on the elementary? Because I feel like there's an important point last year, just in terms of,
Sure.
Kind of like a COVID silver lining, if you think about it. We've had a lot of focus on, on the elementary schools and looking at grade-level teams across the district coming together and, again, being consistent in terms of what we're teaching when. Last year, our, our schedule allowed us to really bring the elementary school together, the elementary level together. Grade-level teams of teachers met weekly and were, you know, basically discussing what are, what are the priority standards? How are we teaching them? When are we teaching them? And really stayed in line. And I think it's just an important piece to keep bringing up, that that, that worked, that helped. You know, Val and Lindsay highlighted it, Lisa just talked about it. When we came together, we were consistent in our approach and what we were teaching when there were, there was improvement seen. So I think, again, just reiterating the need for collaboration and consistency in the curriculum. So Margaret, I'll just jump over to you now.
Sure. So we saw very similar to math and also to grade three and four patterns in the five through eight data. So we also, I think the teachers did a phenomenal job of really focusing on the aspects of reading comprehension and writing that they could in our hybrid year last year. And we actually incorporated a lot of great tools that we're continuing to use. The areas of strength that we saw in the standards were determining how central ideas are developed in passages and across passages. As Lisa said, comparing passages, which is something that is tricky and is a new skill just in this new generation test that students have been asking to do. So we were happy to see, that students have been asked to do, excuse me, so we were happy to see growth there. Identifying author's point of view, character development, and some strength around word choice and identifying the meaning of words in context, I think are all things that we should celebrate in, in the results of the MCAS. Our main area of weakness was the same as in grades three and four, and that was in, in the area of idea development in their writing. So idea development, both in identifying how ideas contribute to development in the reading and how we're executing the development of ideas in the writing. And I, I don't think that that was something that was surprising for teachers, or Lisa and myself, because I think academic stamina is something that we're going to have to really work to build up again. And, and that contributes a great deal to idea development. So those were the patterns that we saw in five through eight. For 10th grade, if we want to go to the next slide, again, we, we scored above the state as far as meeting expectations. Our areas of strength were, again, identifying meaning in passages, character analysis, the purpose of text features. And we did really well in the writing area of convention. Again, continuing that pattern from three through eight, we need to really focus on and work on idea development, the focus in writing, and how we really develop the tools to thoroughly see an idea through to the end before moving on to the next idea in our writing.
Thanks, Margaret. And the next couple of slides are similar to the math with the comparisons. I'm just trying to be mindful of time, is if it's, okay, you have that information. Margaret, unless there was anything else that you wanted to speak to, I think Lindsay kind of captured our purpose.
It's very similar. It's very similar pattern-wise, so I don't think there's anything really to focus on there.
Okay, so you have that information as needed. So then we can move on to next steps.
Okay. I will just say that I am very excited about this new restructuring in the district and at the elementary level. We have a new team. Myself and Michelle Abrek, who is the humanities coach, the two of us have been in the district for, for a long time. We've both been literacy coaches and, and she was at Greenwood, I was at Walton. And so we have worked for a long time together, and we kind of have a good understanding of, of the work that we need to do here in Wakefield. So what we have going on is a refocus of foundational skills and language standards in K to four. So all those early literacy skills, phonics, phonemic awareness, and making sure that teachers have the tools to do that work and the education, professional development that they need in order to teach that. We also have Michelle as a coach to be able to work directly with teachers around those areas. We will have continued to have our aligned scope and sequence for reading, writing, and phonics across the schools and across grades. And as Cara said, that was a, a real silver lining from last year, and we've continued that work, not as often, but our teachers have been collaborating and really stayed with the scope and sequence this year. We've been lucky on the half-days to have some PD time, literacy collaboration time, Michelle and I and the reading specialist team. And we're looking at instructional practices, we're looking at supports, we're looking at assessments, making sure that what we're using is evidence-based and research-based. We have a phenomenal group of, of reading specialists. They're all experts in their field, and they bring a lot to this area. So we're excited to work with them this year. We also have a, a structure in place, the principals will speak more to this in the school improvement plans, the when or what I need structure that really supports targeted instruction for all students. And so we're looking at this as an area to really look at the gaps, look at what students need individually, and be able to target that and differentiate during that time. We also will be starting a curriculum review process this year for ELA. And Lindsay and Val have worked through math with this amazing new structure and process that Margaret and I are really excited to, to follow with for, for ELA. We're excited about that. And also just thinking about, you know, Val talked about, a little bit about this, but since Michelle and I are both now humanities, working around ELA and history and social sciences, is really looking at literacy across content areas and math and social science. Our goal is really to be responsive to our students' needs, to accelerate growth, and to really look at, especially this year, where kids are. Take them where they are and do what we can do to move them forward.
Thanks, Lisa.
Great. So in grades five through 12, I think something that was really great is last year, even with everything else new they were experiencing, the teachers were so willing to try things out to really meet the needs of their students. And I think we started some things that are going to be great to move forward with and that are already addressing some of these patterns of weakness that we saw in the MCAS data. So the first thing that teachers have been trying, they started last year and they're using more consistently this year, is the incorporation of Common Lit for standards-led, aligned reading comprehension support. In the past, we've used iReady for reading. However, it didn't align directly to the Massachusetts State Standards where Common Lit really does. So teachers can pinpoint exactly the comprehension, reading informational text, reading literature text standards that students are struggling with, and then differentiate lessons within Common Lit so that students can practice the standards where they're struggling. And of course, identify if there's a pattern across large groups of students or classes of particular standards where they need more development or growth. We've also been working really hard to move away from teaching strictly out of a textbook and incorporating more contemporary texts that represent diverse voices and perspectives because when students see themselves reflected in curriculum, learning outcomes improve. So that's something we've been working really hard to do. We've also, I think, noticed as a department, five through 12, in years past, that our writing was, development was an area where we could improve. So teachers worked really hard last year and over the summer to create common writing rubrics for each of the genres for writing. So right now, we have a common narrative rubric, informative rubric, and argumentative rubric for grades five through 12. So students are seeing consistent language, consistent expectations in each grade level. So they're not relearning expectations, but instead can focus on the development of their writing. And we're working to look at student samples to anchor grading. And we're looking also to, to see growth in the area of development in those common rubrics. And that's actually our student learning goal for the department this year. So I think we've already taken some really good steps to keep students improving their writing. Another thing that we're really excited about is we piloted something called Brain Frames through the Empower Writing Program this year, and one to two teachers at each grade level participated. And Brain Frames is all about helping kids be, helping kids think about their own thinking and helping kids have a consistent way to organize patterns of language and then take that organization and turn it into writing. Rather than giving them fill-in-the-blank graphic organizers, this is giving them tools to be able to organize their own thoughts, which I think will enable them to do it on their own and be able to have more confidence in their ideas before they actually start writing. And lastly, we're piloting two vocabulary programs this year. Wordly Wise I3000 in grades five through eight and Membean in grades nine through 12. So I really think all of these are huge steps that are just going to continue helping us to see improvement across grades five through 12.
Thanks, Margaret. We can open it up for questions related to ELA, if anyone has any?
What's the timeline for the ELA?
Curriculum review. Yep. So I could, I could speak a little bit to that. You know, I think the original curriculum review process that was created years ago, the timeline has gotten a little bit off in terms of the original intention. We're trying to be mindful of, you know, especially at the elementary, not having, you know, too much too fast. So I think we're trying to pace things in a reasonable way. Like Lisa said, you know, I think Val and Lindsay did a really nice job with their curriculum review team kind of revising that process and, and taking it to the next level. What we've talked about is starting the planning for the literacy in ELA curriculum review this year, kind of January to June, thinking about what it will involve, you know, that additional planning stage. And with a launch happening 2223 of the curriculum review process, where we're doing the work of having the team work together, gather information, pilot, sorry, I should say, field test resources, you know, look in, and then present recommendations at the end of 23.
So implement 23, 24?
Yes, that, that's what we're talking about as a possible timeline. Lisa and Margaret, if you want to add anything, but I think I, I captured what we've talked about in terms of time.
Yes, definitely, but I, I think just to know that we're not just, you know, waiting and going with the status quo until we get to the year that we're supposed to do curriculum review. We're trying to test things out where we can and make improvements to curriculum that then will really help us when we get to that process.
Absolutely. And I, I think that, you know, the ELA curriculum review is just, you know, not to say it's more complex than math, but there's so many different components to literacy, especially when you think about early childhood, early childhood, kind of even pre, pre-literacy skills, moving on to other components, comprehension, writing, and then you get to the secondary level. So there's a, a lot of different components. We want to be thinking about how we're, we're going to structure that so it's successful.
Yeah, one question. How do we determine what software we're going to use for various needs within ELA? You know, do we look at other school districts and see what they use that are perhaps have stronger academic performance with MCAS? How do we go about that?
So, so I can speak to, you know, what generally this group is doing. You know, so they're taking efforts to research, to collaborate, to look at other districts, and then oftentimes presenting to a group of, of teachers to say, you know, here's what this might be able to offer us. Here's what, you know, how we think, the skills that we think will be improved by using it. And then oftentimes, there'll be teacher trials and then kind of consensus. I think within the building level, of course, you know, speaking to the building principals, looping them in. Our building principals and our curriculum coordinators have a lot of, you know, face time together to troubleshoot different things. So that's the general process. Margaret, we're just off ELA, so I'll jump to you and Lisa, if that, if that captures the, the process as it is right now for things like you talked about that we've recently launched, like Common Lit and Membean, et cetera.
Yes, definitely. Common Lit, Common Lit's something that has been successful in other districts and is actually something that I used in my former district with my students in found grade successes. So teachers tried it out and liked it. It's really cost-effective, so we were able to try it. So I think just that research and talking to other curriculum leaders, and also the teachers do a lot of their own research, and they'll find something great and say, I'd really love to try this with my class, and I tried it and it worked. So maybe another teacher wants to try it too. So I think just trying as many things as we can with consistency, seeing what teachers like and seeing where we see the best student outcomes, as well as where other districts are seeing strong student outcomes is our approach, like Cara said.
Great, thank you.
Michael, there's also, we also use Qurate, so the Department of Ed is also now a resource for us because they'll share information about programs and curriculums that they're using as well. So, so that's also kind of another resource for us.
One of the questions I have is the data that we're, that we're reviewing is kind of across the district. Can you talk a little bit about how it gets drilled down into and maybe compare different buildings or different school communities? We talked a little, I heard, we heard a little bit in math about, you know, some of the other student populations and maybe demographics. So can you just talk, just briefly about how it kind of gets drilled down?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think for the interest of this presentation, that's all information that we have and that we've discussed. You know, I think we're, we were trying to be, you know, somewhat timely in terms of not presenting too much, but we can, we certainly have that information to, to provide to the committee if you want to, to see more of a drill down. But I know that part of the work of our building principals, our assistant principals, our curriculum coordinators was, was breaking down the information and presenting it to either their schools, their departments. I know that Rosie Galvin has been looped in in terms of, you know, some of our subgroup data. So it's, there's a lot of internal analysis that's happening behind the scenes that, you know, as soon as we have the information, we're, we're digging into it and we're having our, our curriculum leaders and principals do that work. Does that answer your question a little more? To really break down, like, per, per building, you know, per subject area, it's with smaller groups of teachers to analyze and then.
Were there any particular findings, particularly among buildings or?
I guess I would have to, to kind of, you know, speak, break that out to the, to the principals in terms of, I, I don't, I think we kind of just looked at the elementary as a whole. We didn't see anything like that was glaring that one school was outperforming this school in a, you know, exceptional way. So, but we did look at, we did look building by building. All of the principals, I know, as soon as the information came out, did that work at the building level.
Thank you.
And if we can jump into science, technology, and engineering as our last part of this presentation, I'm going to bring back Valerie Drynan. She has two subject areas at the elementary level, science and math, for the K to four perspective, and then Joanne Marks from five to, five to 12.
Hi again. Yeah, I got the, to be the lucky one with two content areas tonight. So, um, so I'm going to talk quickly about the grade five science test. You can see here, again, these charts are the same as what we presented for math in ELA, where it's the overall achievement of Wakefield versus the state data. Similar pattern we're seeing where we're similar to, or a little better than the state in the data. One of the things that Joanne and I really wanted to call out on the science assessments, just to make sure everyone's aware, there is a little bit of a difference in the science MCAS assessments in that they are really a collective assessment of three years of science instruction. So the grade five science test assesses standards from grades three through five. So the test also is structured in the, in that it assesses all the science domains, so the earth science, physical science, life science, and the technology and engineering standards. And each of those are 25% of the test. So that's the big pieces for the grade five test. Joanne, next slide, and then Joanne's going to talk about the grade eight here.
Yeah, thank you, Val. So for grades five and eight, right? Val just spoke about grade five, and it's similar in grade eight that it is a accumulation of the standards that are taught in grades six, seven, and eight. So students at Galvin in six, seven, and eight, we call it spiral through the science and technology engineering curriculum. And they'll learn standards from each of those life science, physical science, earth and space science, and technology engineering in each grade, and then are tested in the spring of their eighth grade year. So what you see here, again, is, is pretty similar to what we've seen. We're, we're close to the state, a little better than the state. These do seem steady from year to year from when we look in the past.
to year from when we look in the past few years. So similar trends, and...
Sorry, Joanne, not quick with this slide.
Trying to get... And then in, you might notice here, so this is the high school biology MCAS test that students take in after their ninth grade biology class. You might notice the colors are different, the descriptors are different for the achievement levels. And that's because this test that was taken last year is still in the, what's called the legacy version. It was a paper-based test, and the state is still in the process of rolling over and moving forward to what's called the next generation testing, which is what is done in grades five and eight. So this upcoming year, this coming spring, the ninth grader biology MCAS will be this next generation standard. So we'll see, it's a different, they just have different categories for their proficiencies, and the style of test is a little different. It's a little more interactive, more drag and drop. The types of questions that are asked are a different style, and it's on the computer instead of paper. But as far as results go, what you can see here is that, again, it's consistent with what we've seen in the past, and we're seeing good progress for science at the high school level. Many students scoring in the advanced and proficient categories.
Thanks, Joanne. And then, just similar to the other, we have this information in the comparison, but in the interest of time, I'll move through. And next steps.
Awesome. So the next steps for science. So in the K-4 level, as we talked about in the math part of the presentation, we added a STEM coach. We are also excited to have new grade three and four science teachers, and the students are very excited about this as well. They've been around to the third and fourth grade science classes, and they have been very happy to have these new teachers. And so what these teacher positions have allowed us to do is create some more structured science time delivered by science teachers at the elementary level with the classroom teachers present. So there are two teachers for science, 45 minutes, twice per week, in grades three and four at the elementary level this year, which is super exciting. And then these teachers are also working with myself and Marguerite Patterson, our STEM coordinator, and also Joanne. Joanne and I are doing some K-12 work, as well to continue on the work that was started by our science leadership team, which was a group of elementary teachers that Jennifer Thomas and I had worked with, starting that 2019 year, to start up the priority and assessment work. So Joanne, I'm going to pass it over for five to 12. Great. Yeah, so we are always looking for ways to refine and improve our curriculum. And I'm really excited about the professional development that we're engaging with, with teachers in grades five through 12 this year. And so that's what I wanted to highlight tonight. So we've had, we're having a combination of external presenters and in-house collaboration, and we're exploring ways to incorporate real-life phenomena throughout our units. We are also, and this is across all grades and all, all science content areas, we are also always working to increase student opportunities to do science by developing experiences that encourage students to engage with what are called the science and engineering practices. And these are science skills that are woven through the Massachusetts standards. So they are part of the standards, and they show up with the content. And it's, it's work to be able to capture what scientists and engineers are doing, right, the actions. So not only do we want to teach students, you know, foundational content for them to be successful and scientifically literate as they graduate, but we also want them to have the experience of asking questions, developing models, you know, in planning investigations. And all of these are outlined in the standards, and, you know, there's always room to improve on that in our curriculum. So I think we're, this year, we're really focusing on finding those spaces and refining our work to just make it as hands-on and where students are doing science, they're doing engineering as they learn the content.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Any questions related to?
Next slide.
Yep. Questions? Any questions?
So, you know, I think consistently, we're exceeding the state in all categories, particularly the exceeds and meets expectation. Certainly much higher percentage for us on those than the right two bars. So no issue there. The question is, do we really want to compare ourselves to the state? Or do we want to compare ourselves to the Middlesex League or to the other? And I, you know, it came up in the tri board meeting. Socioeconomic status matters, you know, to think it doesn't, I think you're just crazy in that regard. So perhaps the one that has some of those communities that aren't in Middlesex League is really our bar to set ourselves against going forward. So certainly some work to be done. We certainly instituted certain things that take some time to mature as well.
Absolutely. And I think as part of the, you know, the next steps for every area, we try to, we're just trying to keep bringing it back to, you know, we highlighted the indicators for district goals that we presented. Doug and I presented it over the summer, in the fall. We're just kind of constantly trying to bring it back that we're all working towards the same things. We have several different groups, you know, if we can keep that consistency, that alignment, that our district goals connect to the school improvement plans that you're going to hear about next, to the teacher goals, to the work that the curriculum coordinators are doing, that we're all moving in the same direction towards the same goals. And then, you know, we're really hopeful that we're going to continue to see improvement year over year.
And I think, Mike, the observation that was made earlier when we were talking about math, that we were in school less, we had to make choices about what we were going to teach. In some cases, where we taught a standard, we did well on that standard. But there were, there are choices that were made because we just didn't have enough time kind of in school, which was one of the reasons why MCAS last year was controversial to begin with. So I think we have to really be cautious about thinking about this data and taking it very seriously in any case, and then think about the fact that different communities had their kids in school in different formats at different times, right? So even comparing ourselves to the Canton's or the Walpole's gets to get difficult, because we don't even really know what format they were in. Were they in hybrid? Were they in person? You know, what were the choices that were kind of made, and how was our community able to deal with it? That said, the statement that you guys all made about the data looks very similar to 2019, right? So at the end of the day, we can't, we can't kind of walk away from that. I do think we need to be really cautious about this data that was just shown, which is what Doug started with. But I think, having heard kind of the plan and the looking at the data and trying to make change based on data, and looking at kids and looking at the individual special groups, you know, I think we, everything I've heard certainly makes me feel like we're doing all of the right things. We just need time to kind of get like back on track, and then give it time to kind of work. And what you just said, Cara, of being able to see how all of the, kind of the pieces all go together and are aligned, feels like then we're all kind of working toward the same thing. And MCAS scores is one way to look at it, but it certainly, 2021's results can't be the end-all, be-all of looking at that data.
I agree.
Steven, did you want to say something?
I was just curious, in, as it relates to the STEM curriculum, I know, like, in the lower levels in the elementary schools, there might be some more physical work that gets done. Is there any difference in the, in the spaces that are available sort of in the smaller schools versus in a couple of the larger schools, like where they have different project rooms and?
Right. So I would say, just in terms of, and Val, and principals, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but just how we've been seeing the science, the science specialists, I agree with Val said, it's such, we're so fortunate to have that at our elementary level. I think it was just such a, you know, just an excellent idea to help promote science education in the elementary levels, and I've seen a couple of lessons in play. The way the structure's working right now in terms of the elementary teacher schedule is the science specialists are kind of like floater teachers. They go, they go class to class. So the students stay in their, in their home classroom. Their classroom teacher stays for the lesson and supports classroom management and just, you know, is able to hear what's being taught and, you know, reinforce as appropriate. So with that said, big or small, the students are receiving, are participating in the science lesson in their classroom. Does that answer what?
It does. That's great. Thank you.
But then, of course, at secondary, you get into, you know, the different labs and classes at the middle and the high.
Yeah, I believe that's one of the reasons why on the science side, we actually look even more favorable, quite honestly. So it's a great program.
It's exciting. I think there's a lot of good things in place, and I appreciate the work of, you know, the principals, teachers, curriculum coordinators. You know, it's all, it's all moving in a nice direction. So if I can, I hate to, I seem like I'm rushing this long, but I know that the night is getting late, and I appreciate all the people on the call and how long you've been on. Is it okay if I let the curriculum coordinator sign off? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to just move through, you know, I think we hit on all of that, of course, if you have any questions. This, again, this visual we showed around alignment. So we are going to move into our school improvement plans. And the way we structured it tonight, we're so lucky to have our principals here, Katie Dolan helping to represent the Doyle School. We've separated out by level, and so the principals are going to talk at a pretty high level around the goals that are being worked upon, worked on in their, in their individual buildings and levels, and how those have helped to drive teacher goals as well. So they're going to just talk to you overall, big, kind of big picture about what they're working on. So the way we've structured it, we have each slide dedicated to a goal, and then action steps that they'll talk through. So Katie, if I can, I can't really see that great, but if I can jump to you if you're ready and unmuted?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
I'm ready to go.
Thank you.
All right. So thanks, everybody, for having me tonight. I'm kind of filling in for Shannon, I guess. I had said I was going to come and help, but anyways, like Cara mentioned, she wasn't able to be here, so here we are. So bear with me. So our first goal for the school improvement plan is around quality teaching, and we chose to focus ours specifically on social emotional growth for all of our students, since that is really, really critical, both just at our level in general, but also coming off of, you know, the pandemic years that all of our kids have, have kind of endured. So some of our action steps for that, that I'm going to talk a little bit more about, give you some detail about how we plan to kind of make this happen. The first one is around PLC times. We have lots of discussions about social emotional learning during our PLCs. There are also some teachers that have chosen to do their own personal goals, whether it be their professional practice goal or their student learning goal around social emotional pieces. The nice thing about the goals is kind of different teachers are focusing on different areas. So that's nice to have that variety. So you will hear me mention that a couple of times throughout this. We also have our school psychologist, who is going to be working or is working in, coming into classrooms on a monthly basis, not supports the SEL themes that the district has. So for example, the one for October was friendship. So just to kind of give you an example of what that looked like, you know, she came in, she read a book, there's new friend. She also, we talked about things we all liked, you know, what we had in common with our friends. So that was a great resource. It's also really nice, it's a great way to get her into the classrooms and kind of connecting with some of the students as well as the staff. The third action step we have is about teacher professional development. We have a really, really great and jam-packed PD schedule for this year. So there is some PDs on the calendar about declarative language and co-regulation strategies. So we already went to one on declarative language that was run by Linda Murphy, and then I know that there's going to be a follow-up to that one in January. There's also some professional development planned on co-regulation strategies. I know personally, I was really excited to see a lot of the great learning opportunities that are planned for us this year, which is really nice, very focused in and kind of like really connecting with our improvement plans. Then we also have some professional development, as I mentioned, you know, about the declarative language and stuff, but there's also some professional development that we're going to be doing more at the school level about data collection around SEL goals. And again, discussing that during our PLCs, that's an opportunity that people have to kind of share out what they're using for data collection and kind of share some best practices and bring that back.
Thanks, Katie. I'll just jump in, Katie, just.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
No, no, you're fine. I just wanted to say that, again, we'll just open it up for questions after each level, if that's okay for the committee. So goal two?
Yep. Okay. So goal number two is around rich and challenging curriculum. This is about our math. So a lot of this is going to sound familiar to people since we heard from some of the math coordinators earlier. So this is saying that the staff is going to use math standards for pre-K and begin the process of aligning with the K-4 schools. I'm really excited about this one. I was able to be part of the curriculum review team last year that met for the district to implement a new math team. So this first action step, it says teacher rep from curriculum team. That's actually me. And so I'm planning to set up a time to meet with Val so that I can talk about how we might kind of tag on to what they're already doing at the elementary schools. The curriculum that they're using for math starts in kindergarten, but Val and I feel like there is some opportunity for some kind of pre-K carryover. You know, we feel like we do the foundations program for our ELA, and that kind of gives our students a little preview of what they're going to experience in kindergarten, getting some common language, some of those classroom routines. So our goal is to look at areas where there might be something similar that we can do with math. So we kind of see that as, you know, I'm going to kind of start that process and then bring that back to our ILT team, meet with them about how we can then implement it at our school level. I did already talk about this with our ILT team at our first meeting this week. You know, and we're hoping to have teachers really start implementing lessons and testing them out to discover that common language and best practices. One of the things about our ILT this year, as Cara mentioned, like, the structure's a little bit different. It's a stipended position. It beats, you know, after school. People who applied for ILT did so with the understanding that there might be, you know, opportunities for different teachers to come in and maybe observe a lesson in your classroom and that sort of thing. So this is a really good opportunity that we might be able to put that into practice. So then the teachers who are on ILT will help roll out the math plan to the staff, just like at the elementaries. You know, this is definitely a process, bringing this math kind of to that level. And then going down to kind of action step three, we have our PLC meetings. There is a opportunity, some of our PLCs, we meet in goal groups. So people who are doing similar professional practice goals or student learning goals, you know, meet together to compare notes. So there is kind of a faction of people that are meeting and all doing math goals. So that's another great focused area that we can talk about some of this, this stuff, and then bring that back to the larger PLC group as well. Okay, number four, you know, implementing the pre-K math standards. Kind of, that's kind of just really summing up what I've kind of talked about, and that's the piece where it's going to be brought back to the students. So it's our goal to kind of wrap this one up, that it's starting with me, because I did the, some of the work last year, going to our ILT, looping in the goal groups and PLC, and then pushing this out into classrooms. So I think that's kind of our rollout plan. I know the elementaries are working diligently on their math, so we just want to kind of jump in on that as well and see what we can do for our students to really align with the curriculum and also align with, you know, the standards that they're using.
Okay. And then I'll go to goal three?
Goal number three. All right. So then, goal number three is around individualized student learning. And this year, our goal is to collaborate on how to write well-developed IEPs and collect data on goals for students identified through early intervention and parent referrals. This is so critical to what we do at the Doyle, so this is a really important goal. All of them are important for different reasons. So our first action step is, you know, touching on our PLCs and creating a goal bank. This is something that we started last year through our professional development days. We worked really hard on creating some goal banks and kind of dialing down how we were writing our IEPs to make them a little bit more standardized. So especially so that when students went from one class to the other within the school, from, you know, year one to year two, it was a little more streamlined. So that's something we started last year. Now with our new director, Rosie, we're kind of continuing that work, just looping her in and making sure we're doing it kind of in the way that she sees, sees fit for us. Then we are having some ongoing professional development. And so, like I mentioned, we have the PDs on declarative language and co-regulation. We also have some that are We also have some that are sprinkled in that are looking at different pieces of IEPs. So for example, the next one is going to be looking at the PLEP A, PLEP B, pieces of the IEP and really breaking that down. I know that Rosie mentioned that she is going to give people an opportunity to bring a recent IEP that they wrote or that they're working on and really dig into it as part of that PD. So I think that's a really exciting opportunity since that's very live action and giving people a chance to, to really look at something not in hypothetical, something they're actually working on, which I think will be great. Then through our PLCs and staff meetings, there's going to be collaboration on goals. So again, you know, the teachers are excited to learn more about through these professional developments. Our PLCs, we are meeting, sometimes, like I said, we meet in goal, goal-related groups. Sometimes we meet in small groups, sometimes larger groups, depending on, to kind of hit on different areas. Oftentimes, the subject of writing a goal for a specific student might come up in almost like a problem of practice type of situation. You know, someone might be looking for feedback on a goal and bring that to PLC. As well as going on to number four, you know, people might be looking for feedback or ideas on how they can create a data sheet or better track some of those IEP goals. And, you know, oftentimes, we might have a PLC and we say like, this time, everybody's going to bring a data sheet and we're just going to have kind of a sharing opportunity and talk about how you might use a particular data tracking system, which is very helpful and just some like really great professional development and just professional learning that can be done very organically for us. You know, and it's our hope that also those PD opportunities that are offered by the district will also give us some, some ideas and opportunities as far as the data as we work through the different sections of the IEP, the goals and, and objectives. We'll see some, some ideas there as well.
Thank you so much, Katie. If there's any questions for the Doyle Plan, between Katie or myself or Doug, we can, we're happy to answer them. Pretty clear cut?
No, that was good.
Okay, Katie, again, thank you so much for your time tonight. We really, really appreciate it, you filling in. And if it's okay by level, as people finish, they can sign off? Okay, thank you, Katie.
All right, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you just ask the acronym that they, they spell it out at the first time?
Yes, yes, if there's an acronym, just a little request here. If there's an acronym, if you can say what the acronym is, that would be good. Okay, were there any acronyms that anyone heard tonight that didn't know?
No, I looked up PLC.
Oh, PLC Professional Learning Community, yep.
What's SEL?
Social Emotional Learning.
Thank you.
I know, there's a lot of that.
I know, we've said it, you just forget, yeah.
Cross me at the back of the packet.
There we go.
We'll do that. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to our elementary level. We have TJ Liberty, Tiffany Back, and Brian Schmidt to represent the elementary level.
All right, well, I'm up first. And I was just thinking, when you're talking about all of these, the acronyms, we need to get the bingo board back out. We kind of keep track of them that way, it's always a helpful thing. Just starting out with this, the elementary, I feel like as I've listened to everybody talk tonight, there's been a lot of nuggets dropped. So what we're talking about with our school improvement plans is going to align a lot with what the curriculum coordinators were talking about with what we've been trying to do across the schools. So the four elementary schools worked together to develop and craft school improvement plan goals. We wanted to really have a coordinated effort. We wanted to make sure we were using all our resources really well. So we thought it really made sense to have coordinated goals for our school improvement plans. You know, little things are going to look different as we implement them at each school, just depending on what's going on in each building. But we thought having that big goal be the same made a lot of sense. So our first goal, just aligning with the district's goal of quality teaching. So staff will explore and utilize teaching practices that promote student collaboration and productive struggle in the area of math. Obviously, we are implementing a new math curriculum this year. We're using a lot of energy, time, resources for that. So it completely makes sense to make that a strong focus area for our school, one of our school improvement plan goals. Also, just kind of pointing out, you know, if we think about the student collaboration and productive struggle, when the math curriculum review team was working last year and kind of coming together and developing a mission statement to help them focus their lens on what we were looking for in a curriculum, one aspect of the mission statement said that students in Wakefield, about students in Wakefield, our students thrive in classrooms where reasoning, collaboration, productive struggle, and problem solving are expected. If those things are expected, we need to make them a priority in what our teaching looks like. And that's what this goal is about. So you can see from the action steps, and I feel like each of these things were talked about by Val Drynan and Lindsay Moska at different times. You know, we're looking at using our PLC, Professional Learning Community, times and planning times to be able to talk with this, but also use the coaches, use the curriculum coordinators, just kind of using all these resources to give teachers a chance to see what's working, what's not working, how can we improve? Just to kind of go along with this, the standards for math practices, one and three. Standard for math practice one is about making sense of problems and persevering and solving them. Standard of math practice three is constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. So you can see that goes along with that productive struggle and student collaboration. The curriculum leaders engaging in regular observations and learning walks. This isn't just the curriculum coordinators, the coaches, the principals. This is also the instructional leadership teams, you know, the classroom teachers who are really kind of stepping up to be curriculum leaders, to get into classrooms, to be able to kind of open up their classrooms for others as well to see, you know, what's really working, how can we improve our teaching? And then the last part is about using student data and data from learning walks to think about how can we make it better? Again, what's working, what's not working? How can we improve what we're doing as we work toward that goal of quality teaching? And I think I talked really fast, but I think I covered everything I wanted to on this. And I think TJ has the next goal.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Hi, everyone. Goal number two is aligned to rich and challenging curriculum in our instructional strategy. Our staff will continue to foster strong collaboration and curriculum alignment across schools through the implementation of the new IM curriculum or Illustrated Math Curriculum. This is an important step, we are building upon the prior work that our elementary teachers had done last year with really collaborating across all four elementary schools, creating a consistent experience for students, which is very important to us. And as we all know, the support, you know, teachers really need that support from each other as well as the leadership structure that we have in place, we're so fortunate to have here in Wakefield. The action steps include, you know, district level PD, bringing in trainers from IM to really help teachers grow in, in their understanding of curriculum. Also, these engaging in grade level meetings, much like we were talking about where they are working and kind of sharing lesson design and really working on how to, you know, best create a consistent approach and support one another. This is done not only in PD times, but also, and most importantly, in the PLCs and professional learning communities. And lastly, we've really restructured our ILT, our instructional leadership teams to be a conduit or to be a subset to our curriculum coordinators and really being teacher leaders in the building. So, you know, this, the ILT will work towards, you know, one function will be looking at IM and our curriculum as a whole, but really being kind of go-to people in our building to support teachers at every grade level in the development and, you know, their, their work with Illustrated Math. And now I'd like to pass it on to Brian Schmidt for our third goal.
All right, thanks, TJ. Hi, everyone. So I'm, so I'm excited to be able to speak a little bit about this third goal. So for our third school improvement plan goal, we're focusing on individualized student learning. And what we're trying to work toward here is creating a structure and a system that will provide differentiated, differentiated learning experiences for all of our students. So really thoughtfully planned learning experiences, not just for our students who are struggling or below grade level, but those who are excelling as well. So that's what we're aiming to do with this third goal, is to improve those systems and structures that support that differentiation for all of our students. I very much appreciate the request to clarify acronyms. This is an important one, that if you have an elementary student, you may hear about frequently, it's WIN, which stands for what I need. So the first and very important kind of starting place for what we want to do this year to roll out this goal is to create a structure where each grade level at each school has a specific time that is dedicated to focusing on whatever it is that students may need. We're really using reading as a, as a starting place, or at least in the initial planning of this goal. That's what, that's where our thinking was, kind of starting with reading, what do kids need in terms of reading, and then sort of growing this from there. But, you know, each, each day, students will have a half hour block. So each first grader at the same time, we'll have a half, half hour block of time that's really dedicated to our teachers and staff trying to work together to provide small group instruction and individual instruction in some cases to meet whatever, whatever students' needs may be. So there may be some, some remedial instruction in reading. There may be some, some extended reading groups. There may be some small groups related to math. There may be some social emotional learning opportunities in small group work that could be happening at this time. As Tiffany mentioned, it'll look a little bit different from school to school based on student needs and staff resources. But the idea is that at this time every day, our staff will be working to provide whatever it is that students need as best we can. The way that we will do that and kind of keep track of whatever it is that students need is through our use of data. So we'll do that at our bimonthly data meetings and our weekly professional learning community times, where teachers and staff can work together to analyze the data that's collected about students, some of which is collected during that what I need block, using XST Math, Lexia, and other assessments, trying to gather information about where students may need additional support or help and where students might benefit from an accelerated learning opportunity that would be appropriate for them and, and some peers. So we'll use that, that data through those, those data meetings, which will happen about every other month, and also in our professional learning community times as well. And lastly, I, something that I, I really like about this goal and that I think is extremely important is, you know, it's, it's fundamental to this, this approach that students understand that every, everyone needs something different and everyone learns in a different way. And everyone needs to practice, you know, more on, on this and, and that, depending upon their learning style and their background, their language skills, subjects that they like or don't like. So we want students to embrace this mentality that everyone truly needs something different. And at that win time, like I said, everyone, ideally, we hope eventually will be getting something that looks really different based on whatever it is that they may need. So to try to help our students recognize that, that everyone needs a different learning experience, we want to provide enrichment opportunities in our schools to celebrate the fact that everyone learns differently and promote empathy for others who are different than you. Because that attitude is really important to, to making this instructional approach non-stigmatizing and successful. One example of, of how we hope to accomplish this is through an enrichment that will be supported through our, I believe it's part of our PTO, our learning about differences and disabilities. Each school will participate in enrichment related to that through a, an outside consultant later in the school year, which we're very excited to plan and, and learn more about soon. Yeah, I think that is it for me.
Thank you, Brian. So now I can open it up to any questions for our elementary principals? Everyone's tired, I know. All right, well, thank you, thank you all so much for coming tonight. Feel free to sign off, Tiffany, Brian, and TJ, we appreciate your time.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And the last one standing, our secondary principals, who will present together again, tried to, to work hard to align, looking at five to 12. So there was a lot of, lot of carryover, a lot of collaboration on the Galvin and the high school's school improvement plan. So we have Megan Webb, principal of the Galvin Middle School, and Amy MacLeod, principal of Wakefield Memorial High School.
Thank you. Yeah, Kara, I feel like it's like, and then there were two. Right? We're getting there. So, so thank you, everybody. So first, I, before we talk about our, our three goals that we're going to go through, we wanted to just say how this year's process was a little bit different. The school leaders from the Galvin, along with the school leaders at the high school, and then also bringing in our, both of our ILTs were able to work on these goals collaboratively. So the secondary goals are really aligned this year in, in a, in a different way. Some of our action steps, as we go through it, you'll see are slightly different from level to level, but mostly there's a through line, and this has been great. I think Tiffany had said earlier, it, it kind of parallels the work that the curriculum coordinators are doing and helps us to align the work vertically so that they can support us better. And the other thing that we'll say about these goals too is that we use the language from the DESI-recommended language around goals and outcomes for teachers and for students, and so there's a lot of alignment there. So our first goal is really about quality teaching, just like it is at the other levels. I think the pieces that we talked about here, we're really thinking about classrooms that include practices that help students take risks, really getting that sense of students needing to own their own learning as they get older through our, our school system and being able to figure out when they need to challenge themselves and can take ownership and, and sort of understanding of their own, of learning. So part of this is about our teachers really looking at developing culturally responsive teaching practices as the demographics of Wakefield changes and our schools change. We think it's important that, that teachers are really thinking about practices that reflect and support students from all different backgrounds with all different learning abilities and all different sort of styles of learning. I think that the second area that we talked about is sort of the different, the idea that we want students to be able to be comfortable in their classrooms, having their own self-awareness, having awareness of others, and really being able to be respectful and mindful of the importance of differences. And when you think about that, we think about all different kinds of differences, backgrounds, identities, language strengths, and then also being able to navigate those differences if conflicts arise, right? And as students get older and more vocal and they start creating identities that sometimes are distinct from one another, and we think it's really important that we teach them how to learn collaboratively, how to listen and learn from each other. The third piece, and we see this a lot when we go through learning walks, we want classes to be busy and boisterous and full of noise. We want to hear students engaging in academic discourse, we want them asking questions, we want them reflecting on their own learning. And all of these are ways that we can tell that students are engaged in classrooms. And then finally, we really talked about in this goal, this idea of feedback and being, having teachers be able to give feedback regularly and often so that they are able to connect with students, that students know that teachers recognize their learning and that they're giving them positive feedback that helps them learn. So Megan's going to take on the second goal.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks for hanging out with us, everybody, late into the night. So our second goal is around, it's kind of taking what Amy was talking about and looking at how we utilize curriculum to bring that goal to life. So it should sound very, very familiar to you at this point in the evening. We're looking at how culturally responsive learning experiences. Um, we're looking at how uh culturally responsive learning experiences um can happen through our curriculum, particularly the um illustrative mathematics curriculum that you've heard about um throughout the evening, uh which is happening, of course, at different grade levels in our uh two different schools, but the rollout is happening in a very similar way. Um, and again, as you heard, that's a curriculum that really helps teachers and supports them um to be culturally responsive in their practice um and to reach all learners. Uh, we're also um cited the work that um various departments, particularly our um social studies and ELA departments, the work that they're doing to diversify their um texts, uh which has been happening um for a couple of years now, but um it's something we're going to continue to focus on. Um, that's not limited to social studies and ELA, but that's where um a lot of the uh current work is happening. Um, I think you heard about some exciting work happening in science curriculum too um to ensure that we're representing multiple viewpoints um in all of our classrooms. Um, and for our third goal, um, we looked like uh like our elementary colleagues, we looked at how we can support students um academic and social emotional growth through differentiation, um through co-teaching, um through strategies that support all learners. Um, at the Galvin, um, a lot of that is rooted in uh co-teaching, uh given the model that that we have. Also looking specifically at inclusive practices that uh our teachers have been um studying in their five-part PD series. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about a specific piece of the Galvin schedule um that's included in this goal. And then Amy will close us out with um a specific aspect of the high school schedule. Um, but at the Galvin, we're looking at our our team block, um, which is a block that has a whole lot of potential um to support students in a way that is not um very different from what Brian Schmidt was talking about in terms of um the what I need block in elementary, uh but thinking about how what that looks like at the middle school level and how we can use data to um thoughtfully group our students and make sure that they're um in that that time period. And I will pass it to for um the high school version of this.
Great, thanks, Megan. Um, so at the high school, um, the the this goal is um supported by uh our ability to implement advisory. Um, so last year during um COVID, when we had um these different schedules for the year, we were able to implement an advisory program um where students and teachers are connected in a a a non-grading setting, but just sort of making connections, supporting students' social emotional learning um this year, even though the advisory is not built into our schedule regularly. Um, we heard from teachers that advisory was an important component that um we wanted to keep in the building. Um, and we know, as Megan said, it it supports their social emotional learning. Um, so we've been able to create advisory once a month. We have an extended homeroom advisory period. Uh, we have our counselors who worked this summer on a curriculum that teachers use. Um, just a space where um adults, uh our our teachers can work with um students to um work around academic goals, um can work around life skills, decision-making um and other pieces um so that they have that time in their day where they're connecting with an adult and they're learning some of these other um social emotional skills that we know are important for their success in high school. Um, and I think that wraps up um our three goals for our school improvement plan.
Thank you so much, Megan and Amy. Uh, any questions for secondary, either for Galvin or the high school? Pretty clear, but and I know that the committee had access to the um the complete school improvement plans um prior to the presentation tonight. Um, so we really appreciate the high-level overview. Um, okay, so then I can release Amy and Megan, the last ones. Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it. Have a good night. That's it for me. No, that was a long one. Um, but yeah, so um I guess moving on unless there's any other questions for me, I think we're good.
Good, so I can pick it up. And so we, just to get back to the agenda, so we had shared in our in our early November meeting, excuse me, our early October meeting, that we would be uh sharing some information on S R three. So we had shared um some initial information. Um, do you do you have the clicker, Kara?
I do, yeah, do you want me to move it or you want to move it?
I got it.
Thank you.
So um we we will be mindful of the of the time and and kind of work through this. And so at S R three is a three-year grant and S R is is part of the um the American Rescue Plan. And so the American Rescue Plan Act, you might ha- you might hear sometimes referred to as ARPA, you know, because and everyone believes that ARPA is this kind of unlimited fund of money. Um, and so it it is not, right? And so the ARPA funds that came to the town this year, which like S R, it is a three-year grant. So the town received eight million dollars um and on a much smaller scale and as part of the the ARPA plan. So the funding for school districts to respond to COVID um is we they call it S R, right? And so it's it's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And so the purpose of S R three is to literally support the safe reopening and sustaining safe operations of schools while meeting students' academic, social, emotional and mental health needs resulting from COVID. And so I can I can share with you that we are seeing significant needs in the first quarter as students have returned to school. We're seeing significant needs at the elementary classrooms, especially in the K two space. And and so we're kind of our working theory with this around K two is for for many of those students, they experience the biggest gaps in kind of starting in a preschool program and also in a consistent kindergarten in grade one program as they've moved into grade two. And so if if you remember, in pre-K and K, one of the most important things that student students learn is just really how to learn. So they're they're learning pro-social skills to be around other students, to understand how to kind of maintain boundaries, um while also understanding how to participate in their learning. So in this, as part of the grant, all communities that applied for the grant needed to um do a survey of the community and to prioritize the results, okay? And so it is very prescriptive, so the information that you'll see here comes directly from the grant workbook. So we had, so we put out a survey. There we go, so we put out a survey, I thought that was a laser for a minute. And you'll see that we had seven hundred and seventy-nine respondents to the survey, which we thought in the short amount of time that we had the survey out there, we were really pleased with the participation. Yep, yep. Um, so yes, it was out for a little, probably about just maybe one day over a week. And uh we had seven hundred and seventy-nine responses. And so this is a color-coded um kind of, this really kind of captures the results and what was prioritized. So in the top row, we have all seven hundred and seventy-nine responses prioritized as one, two, three, four. So you'll see one, two, three, four. And then we had each each group, you know, for for example, parents and families, school administration, school staff, teachers, students. So we had each stakeholder group and what their individual priorities are. And so which made up the total on the top. So it's it's a it's an infographic that's color-coded so that you could see what what's each what stakeholder group prioritized as their one, two, three, four. And so up on the top row, what you'll see here is that tutoring programs and support, including early literacy, um tutoring, it was a number one choice. The number two choice was, and this was a surprise to me, because I did not believe that out of all of these stakeholder groups, that a second choice would be facilities improvement. I thought it would all be, I thought they would, the priorities would be um direct service to kids, direct service to kids, direct service to kids. So I was surprised by that. So the the third priority was academic support, excuse me, academic support staff um that includes academic coaches, interventionists, um a- as well as teaching residency programs and paraprofessionals. And the fourth priority was increasing personnel and services to support the holistic needs of students, including staff guidance, adjustment counselors, nurses, psychologists and or social workers. And so we're pleased that 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 made the cut, but number four here. And you'll also see that, and and you know this from the work and information that we've presented, that we have prioritized um these these supports and resources in this space as we think that it's going to be critical for us to continue to understand and m- commit resources to the behavioral health of our students as we're getting back to work, are getting.
Just sound on a simple majority of the population as far as determining one, two, so you have seven hundred and seventy-nine in total?
We have seven hundred and seventy-nine total.
Right.
And this is the the top four priorities.
So one was based on, obviously not all hundred and seven hundred and seventy-nine picked one, or is that?
Correct.
A percentage of them did, right?
So it you'll see the the school administration group picked this as number one. For for parents and families, it was number two.
Right, and but it was based off of a, if it was over fifty percent.
Correct.
That then that was the decision.
The numbers are the numbers, right?
Okay.
And so in this infographic, I I really like this. Um, this was created by Lindsay Moska and fortunately she's home and hopefully asleep at this point. But I I gotta have to give her a credit because she really thoughtfully kind of gave this information back. We're really, we don't usually see it this broken out this well, and so we thought it was really helpful. Um, but but please keep this in mind, because you'll see as we, you'll see in the creation of the grant, you'll see these priorities represented.
Couldn't you check more than one?
You could.
Two number ones, is that what you mean, Amy?
So when you say five hundred and seventeen parents, they didn't, it's not actually equals five hundred and seventeen responses. Some parents might have checked all those boxes and more, right?
So you know, you could have checked more more than one stakeholder group.
Okay.
But I don't know if you could have created, so I I think your priorities were numbered, right? So are you saying, could you take the survey more than once?
No, I mean, you usually can. The surveys you send out allow you to take them.
So yeah, but in the in this case, I I believe that we they were allowed to take it once.
Right, but I'm saying like a parent and family wasn't just tied to one response.
Correct.
Or are you saying, yeah? Because it would be hard to justify number one being tutoring programs if your highest group picked the blue, picked facilities improvements. Do you see what I mean?
Right, right.
But then students account for a high volume and so does staff and.
Not five hundred and seventeen, though.
But if you look, it's number two, right? So if if you look at the numbers, you have to consider that it's number two.
Yeah, I'd love to see the the actual numbers that feed this.
Yeah, the actual.
Yeah, we have it for you if you'd like to look at it, yeah.
I see some very similar alignment there and I think that's that like bodes well.
I I think so too. So the the priorities based on the information that was presented on the previous slide. Um, so what we've done is the total amount of money that we've gotten for S R three, and please keep in mind, this is a three-year grant, right? We are not looking to spend to spend all of these resources in one year. We're really trying to be thoughtful about doing this over time. But interventionists and paraprofessionals were highlighted. And so, you know, in working with this and breaking out a budget um and trying to get it into a grant application, this is how we we broke it out. Um, so please know that we can make amendments to the grant, but this is our starting point. So for interventionists and paraprofessionals, we believe that we can fund ten ten interventionist or paraprofessional positions at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For each of the three years?
In total.
In total.
Okay.
The total of the grant.
Total of the grant is eight twenty-two, eight seventeen.
So you could do three each year. Is that fair? Three point three each year.
Three point three each year, yes, correct. Right? And so the stipends for after-school and summer tutoring, um, so this this aligns with our Acceleration Academy. So we we've been thinking a lot about, you know, um, so there's an acceleration roadmap that has been been issued by the state and it aligns with the Acceleration Academies and the grant that we applied for to bring students in in the summer. If you if you remember, that was a ninety thousand dollar grant. Um, and what it did, it it allowed us to do a soft opening with our kindergarteners. It's hard to think, that worked so well. Okay, it's hard to think that we shouldn't do that again. So this this could fund that, okay? And the the one forty-four is a stipend breakout, um similar to the Acceleration Academy grant that we had in the summer, um that would be funded the same way.
Is that number of students?
Excuse me?
Is that number of students, one forty-four?
No, 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 that's the number of stipends.
Okay.
Right, and so what we're thinking about is not just doing it in the summer, but we want to try to stand up tutoring programs after school um in the winter, spring and and summer here.
So it's a number of tutors, basically.
Correct, correct, yes.
Uh, we also did the, I'm trying to think of the, where do we capture the math? Uh, was it six and eight, the grades?
Yes, uh, not not six and eight.
Eight and ten?
Eight and ten.
Eight and ten. Is that included in this as well, or is this mostly focused on the early literacy?
It's it's not, it it can be at any level, right? It could be at any level. We did not designate where, we just designated the one, right? And so that's that's the number two. Stipends for school psychs and assessments. We know, you've heard me say this, we know that we're going to have an uptick and kind of demands for special education services. And a lot of that starts with an assessment, right? And so we we need to be prepared for that. And what that does is number three, allows us to be prepared. In terms of contracted services, those are additional types of um individual assessments that students may need. Um, the consultant professional development for mental health. So that's the next line down. We're dedicating money to that. So that includes, so the the mental health piece is like Lynn Lyons. So Lynn is is going to be, she's working with faculty and staff, but she's also going to do a parent piece, right? So there's there's help. So what we're learning is that to best serve the social emotional needs of students, we also have to help families, right? So it's not, it's not like a one and done, we have to think of it more comprehensively. And so and and the next lines um again are for, they're for facilities, right? And they really all focus on um commissioning and balancing HVAC services. So what happens is when a building is commissioned, um before it's turned over to the district, the the vendors that installed the units, they have to come in and basically demonstrate that everything is working as advertised. And then what they do is they train the people that are going to be in the building, usually custodians, DPW personnel and others, um how the systems work, right? And this is how we balance them. And what happens is over time, you know, things start to get manipulated, they get changed. And so they have to be put back to a baseline setting in time. It's really good engineering practice. Um, I'll give you an example. If you can remember back to town meeting when we had it at Galvin, right? If you if you recall, it would get to be about eight o'clock at night and then all of a sudden the temperature would drop. You know, you think, what what's happening here right now? You know, all of a sudden it's freezing in here. Uh, Betsy Sharon would be on the stage with her, right? She'd be up there with her down jacket. And so that that is a a concrete example of a system that's just not balanced and working well as it as it needs to. So what this does is this dedicates money from this grant um to provide support to balance those systems. And so.
Got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, have you tried to budget it for the three years and can you move money between categories?
Yes.
Yes and yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this is our grant application to D E S I, not to jump in, but this this is, um, D E S I wouldn't release the funds until we. not to jump in, but this is, DESI wouldn't release the funds until we demonstrated how, in response to the survey, we were going to meet the needs of all of these categories. So at any time, you can file an amendment to a grant, as long as you're within 10% of the lines.
The high school, would they look at that and say, you're in process for getting a new high school, why are you going to update the HVAC now?
So the high school, so this money would not be, so this money most likely at the high school would be invested to maintain systems, right? For as long as we can.
Okay. It's not putting in a new?
It's not putting anything new in. It's, you know, pneumatics, it's making sure that the systems that we have, as old as they are, are working or functioning at an adequate level.
Okay.
Right? And so there's a grant consultation, which is basically a grant administrator for $3,000, and that constitutes the total 822, 817, which is what we applied for in the grant. Am I missing anything, Amy?
No, then we have till September 2024 to spend. There's a lot of grant reporting that goes with this. But again, this is the application that we had to submit in October to DESI.
Boff, can you talk a little about S R one and two?
So I just thought it would be important to, because this is S R three, so what does that mean about S R one and S R two? S R one, we got in fiscal '21 for 102, 286, which totally went to technology devices and PPE. That was in the, when we were in the part of the pandemic, we were in a hybrid model. It was all about remote learning, PPEs, math, so that went to all of those supplies. S R two, we're using now in fiscal '22, and we're covering 4.5 FTEs. Adjustment counselor at the high school and middle school, I know we've talked a couple of times at meetings about that and how critical those roles have been. We still have two postings up for school psychologists at the elementary, middle and high for testing. They're vacant right now, but they are posted on our website and on School Spring.
Not by choice, they're vacant, right? They're just very, very difficult positions to fill. So for us, what we've done is we've looked at this as a, the need for testing, we've looked at kind of a Plan A. Plan A is we would be able to hire someone that's qualified and can add value to what we're doing. That's Plan A. Plan B would be, if we can't, and the number of assessments continue to tick up, can we create a stipend and give our faculty an opportunity to do the work and make a little extra money, right? So that would be kind of Plan B. And then Plan C would be, if the number continues to tick up and we can't handle it with staff that we have, we would outsource it. So that would be Plan C. But again, those positions are testing positions, and they also align to the work and needs in special education.
Can we amend, you were saying that we could amend things? Do we have a timeline on when that would, like?
So S R two has to be spent in '23.
Okay.
All of '23, like this calendar year or this?
Well, these are all fiscal years. So we do have a year to spend it, but this is targeted, we will spend S R two in fiscal '22.
So by June?
By June.
Even if we don't hire those psychologists?
But alluding to the three categories that Doug just talked about, whether it's a stipend or contracted services, because the need is still there.
So what are we using now, contractor?
So now those two FTEs are vacant. And in the meantime, and to address the needs, we are doing contracted services.
Okay.
The last position is a .5. We have a full-time language-based teacher at the Galvin, but half of it is funded by this S R two money. So that's sort of how we targeted S R one and S R two, and the last one will be S R three, which we have to 2024.
No S R four?
I wish, maybe. We'll see what happens, right?
So maybe S R four would be part of the ARPA money that comes to us, maybe in the fourth year, that might be left over from the town money. We'll see. You know, one of the things, please hear my words when I say this, we need to address the needs of our students in classes, right? And so we need to address learning loss and COVID-related needs as they relate to kind of our students at all levels, right? Again, the needs that are being presented, our needs, that the range of needs in classrooms, I don't think has ever been greater in my entire academic career. It's amazing. You know, we have students and teachers, so it's no wonder teachers are going home exhausted. So we'll have some classes where, in a second grade class, we'll have students that really are at kind of a level one in terms of reading, so they're just learning to read in grade two. And we'll have students in grade two that are reading at the fifth grade level, in the same class, they're all going to lunch together, they'll go to recess together. But that range, that distance, is not a distance that I have certainly seen in my career. And I know that it's causing teachers to really be anxious about trying to meet everyone's needs, and, you know, they don't acknowledge that there's been kind of these gaps in times that kids have spent in school, but that's a quick. So that's bullet number one. We need to extend the day for intervention services. This is something that I think is going to be fundamental to the work that we're going to need to do in the next three years. We need to provide academic support and behavioral health support over the summer. We're looking at different ways to look at the behavioral health piece. We're talking with our new Board of Health Director, Anthony Choi, to talk about behavioral health and counseling needs through a public health lens, and how can the town support that, which I'm really optimistic about. I know Anthony has some really amazing ideas, and I know he's working with Catherine Dingra, and also kind of the town leadership and Tom Walsh, to think about ways that we might be able to provide that. And of course, healthy and safe environments, and I mentioned this, counseling and student support services. So that is it from us, so.
I have a curiosity for learning loss, and I don't necessarily think that you'd have metrics on it, but they just went through the MCAS. They got some results back on their first assessment, not that I'm thinking it's, you know, actionable data, but were there any surprises in terms of, or?
For MCAS?
Yeah, in terms of like an assessment that came sort of after a year, 18 months of remote learning and hybrids and.
You know.
I'm surprised that it looked like it stacked up to the previous.
You know, if you listen to what the curriculum coordinators say, you know, Val Dreinen, if I could be off, but I believe she made the statement, you know, kids did well in what we taught them.
Yeah.
Right? But, you know, what ratio proportion, what does that mean, right? Like, so if there's how many standards, how many were taught, how many weren't, which is I think what Kevin's question was, right? Which I think we need to continue that conversation, not this evening. But I do think we need to continue that conversation to drill down, because if you listen to what Margaret Messier said, so Margaret has, and I think all of the curriculum coordinators, Cara included, they have an ability to articulate and kind of tease out, this is what we're doing well, these are areas of growth for us. But in regard to your question, did we see anything that was a surprise? I don't think we saw anything in regard to the test data that's a surprise. I think that what we're seeing as a surprise is just, just the needs of kids, right? And just how difficult it is for some students to be in school for the day. You know, I know it sounds funny, but, you know, there's a lot, lot happening, right? And, you know, it's, and again.
Jump in, just to add one point, you know, I think we were talking a lot about just, again, you know, what we prioritize for the most of the part we did well, but really thinking about, you know, where we landed with math and just the differences in how we were really able to teach math last year, which, you know, is far different than what we want to see in terms of math instruction, which I know Lindsay and Val have talked a lot about, just, you know, use of materials, hands-on, collaborative learning, working together. We were so limited in instructional practices last year to adhere to safety guidelines, that I think that that did play into part, probably more so in the math, but it was definitely a huge challenge. And, you know, we're hoping to go back to what we know is best for kids, kind of less of like what we did tonight, just giving information out there, kind of engaging a little more, more hands-on. But yeah, I think we have the opportunity to do that more this year than we did last year.
I have a couple of questions.
Of course.
Can you go back to the slide that has a laundry list of the S R three? Can you give us an example, a couple of examples of the contracted services assessment?
Sure. So contracted services assessment would be, you know, if a student needed an assessment and we didn't have personnel to provide it in school, you know, an audiologist, you know, if we needed to have someone come in and assess a sound field and understand how best to support a student with an FM hearing system, that would be a contracted service assessment.
Isn't that something we have already? Are you saying, are you seeing an uptick because of COVID?
No, 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 I'm saying that would be an example of a contracted service. Do we provide that now? Yes.
Okay.
So these are in addition there, too. Because one of the things that we're struggling with, Amy, is to get certain assessments done in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Because some positions are so difficult to fill. Does that make sense?
Yep. And then if you go to the next slide that talks about the S R two money that we're in right now, I don't see any of those carried over into S R three. So what happens with those positions at the end of this school year?
We're going to, in the spring, as we go through the budget.
Yeah.
So what's going to happen is, we will travel around to schools as we've done in the past, we'll take feedback from faculty and staff, principals will make their proposals of what they feel like they need, we will kind of process that, and we will kind of look at, these positions are all one-year positions.
Yeah.
So we will assess if things, if some of these positions need to continue, and if they do, they could certainly be moved to S R three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or we could decide to prioritize something else.
Yeah. So it's really about prioritizing, right? And so, you know, and it's also about just negotiating the kind of this funding cliff, right? We do want to be kind of very clear about, this is one-time money, right? And the notion of, I appreciated Doug Butler's comments in our tri-board meeting, when he said, you know, if we need a position, we need to kind of make it part of the regular budget. I hope I'm quoting him correctly, I don't want to misquote him certainly, but I appreciated that because I think that there's a recognition there that, for example, the high school adjustment counselor, the second high school adjustment counselor, a high school our size, a year ago, we had one adjustment counselor, that it's insufficient, right? And so we now have a second that's funded through this grant, it's a one-year position, but I will tell you that that second adjustment counselor and the first, the two of them together have been amazing, just in regard to the day-to-day functioning and helping students. Yeah. So it's hard to think that we wouldn't need to find funding for at least that position moving forward, right? And the adjustment counselor at the middle school as well, you know, I think we could make a case for that, certainly, too.
This might be somewhat off topic, but it's my last question. There. And I brought this up to you, I think, and Cara, there's a course, an MCAS prep course, I don't know the exact name for it, and I know some students last year were kind of tapped, like, recommended. Is there any way that we could roll that out to offer to all the students, to prepare them on how to take a test? Because I know that's part of the course. I know some, you know, some kids, their parents opt them out, but there are a lot of parents who look at their MCAS scores for their child, and I've known parents who've learned that their student might be dyslexic because of the MCAS scores. But I want to set our students up for success and make them confident test takers, because when you go out into the real world, some of these professions, you have to learn how to take a test. So I didn't know if there's any, I don't know if there's a cost associated to that.
I mean, I can speak to just, again, we didn't get into it tonight, but just, I think you're right, I think there is a need for that across the board for all of our students. And again, we're careful in our messaging, we're not trying to teach to the test, but there's a lot of content to cover in MCAS. And to do things like review with students, to go over test-taking strategies, to set them up, you know, to be better prepared, you know, we've definitely, you know, shifted the conversation a little bit, you know, at the building level with administrators, with curriculum coordinators, and speaking to teachers about little tweaks that can be done to help support all of our students. So I think across the board, that's largely going to be a direction we move in, to provide that. In the past, what we've done with the after-school MCAS group is we have looked at the data, we've had some cutoffs, and we said, okay, these students would benefit from, I think it was like an eight-week MCAS prep course, and we would run that at the middle and the high school level. You know, expanding that, you know, again, I think, you know, anything's up for discussion, but I think there's two things that we need to do. Think about maybe broadening the population that we target after-school, but then also making some tweaks just for all of our students, just in terms of our regular practice.
I also want to communicate very clearly that I've talked a lot about our needs at elementary, right? We have similar needs at middle school and high school, and I also want to be clear that we have students that are absolutely thriving and are ready to take on more. And it's our responsibility to challenge those students to meet their needs as well. So I don't want to talk about just a grant or needs of students to focus on just, you know, just a small section. There is, there are needs on kind of both ends, and when I say both ends, students that are struggling and might need academic support, but also our kind of very best students that are looking to thrive and take on more, I feel like that is really a wonderful opportunity. And we need to be able to talk more about how that's happening and what that looks like. And so I just want to be clear about that, and I think some of the work that Amy McLeod is doing with early college and internship, I think we're heading in the right direction in that space. But we need to be able to share more in these meetings about what that looks like in very concrete terms, so. I feel like I can, I don't know if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you so much for hanging in so long with us. And this is like two meetings in one, so got your money's worth.
All right, so with that, let's do some subcommittee reports. So I've got the first one for finance and facilities, we met on October 28th. And that meeting, we got an update from Tim on some facilities things, mostly around getting the, all the schools ready to turn the heat on, and kind of the process that that takes, which was very interesting. Danielle Collins also joined that meeting, and we spent a very long time talking about kind of the difficult situation that food services is in, both from a procurement and, you know, getting product and how she's going about that and how she's leveraging her network. And we just, we got a ton of information about just the backstory, about the challenges that food services organizations in schools are up against, and how lucky we are to have someone like Danielle leading our efforts there, because she's really got quite the network and quite the strategy. And we also, as part of that conversation, talked about just the need for help in the food services department, which turned into a conversation around just needing substitutes and food service help and traffic coordinators, and that we are kind of not staffed at the levels that we need to be, and is there a way for us to get the word out to talk to parents who might have the time this year but aren't looking to kind of have a job forever in the school district, but might be willing to kind of step in for this year, knowing that we've got kind of a lot of gaps. So we did do a little bit of brainstorming and talking about that. And then lastly, we talked a little bit about some open positions that, or an open position that was, that needed to be filled on the finance side under Christine. So that was really our. So that was really our, our meeting. We're scheduled to meet the 18th, November 18th. So that's our next meeting. Tom or Kevin, do you guys have a high school working group update?
I'm sure. I could certainly add just a little bit to, Doug had mentioned a few things during his remarks. But I think just to make it very, very brief, and we can perhaps have a more detailed report next meeting. But a detailed calendar has been published, starting with really the first, first meeting of the group in earnest on October 27. And the calendar is now fleshed out through the end of June with the anticipated last meeting, on the calendar anyways, is before the MSBA for their hopeful vote. So the, so the timeline of, of this runs through June of 2022. One thing to mention, as just a reminder to folks, the public forums for the education visioning, they're underway. There are seven forums that are, that are to take place between, I think the first one was like two, two weeks ago, running through the end of March. Certainly, we encourage people to, to contribute to those, to observe if you want, to certainly be a participant. Those are going to be critically important. Certainly, the couple that we've had so far have gone really well. It's been a really active, engaged member, not only the full membership of this group, but also some citizens who, and parents and educators who have, who have thoughts to share.
Tom, is there one tomorrow?
There is.
There is, okay. Okay, good.
There is actually, yeah. So if anyone is really interested on the dates and all of the details, I would encourage you, they, a website specific to this task has been set up, and it's Wakefield MHS Project, Wakefield Memorial High School Project, but it's WakefieldMHSproject.com. So I'd encourage anyone to, to take a look at that. And all the meeting dates and the Zoom links and everything that, that really is, is available is out there.
Also, do you have an update for labor and personnel?
Not really. The only labor update is that the MOU that we've been talking about since the end of August or so has been, has been finalized. A tentative agreement has moved from the tentative agreement stage to the, to the approved stage. So there is nothing new that the committee already doesn't know about the document. It's just been some movement on, on some clarifying language and such, but, but nothing, nothing different.
Okay. Mike, student services?
Sure. So we met last Wednesday, seems like a lot longer ago. So we had both David Robinson, who's the director of counseling, and Katherine Dingra at the meeting. So we went through some of the behavioral health survey information that we had heard about several weeks ago and talked about a few of the subjects there, signs of suicide and drug intervention. So we went into some detail in regards to that and what the plan of actions were or what was already currently in place as well. We also talked about what the adjustment counselors are doing, some of the things they're trying to set up regular meetings. And then obviously, the goal for us is to try to get aligned so that we can provide recommendations to this body around what sort of budgetary changes we want to make, so that, that will continue going forward. That's it.
Do you guys have another meeting scheduled?
We do. It's next Wednesday, so it's every two weeks.
So you guys are doing every other, every other Wednesday?
We are, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And I could just add, since you asked that question, that labor has a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, a week from today, next Tuesday morning.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, the policy subcommittee met two weeks ago, and we spent time talking with Dorothy Presser of MAS C, who brought, kind of presented a little bit on the policy services that they offer. Kind of talked about the three-year process to review your policies, eventually host your policies, answered any questions that we had, and I thought it was very well received. So we definitely want to be moving forward with that, so we can continue to talk about that as well. Talked about, just clarified some information about some of our policies, particularly around bullying and what's published on the web, and just needing to reconcile some of the changes that had been approved by the former committee back in the new year of 2021. And then continued our conversation around what our communication goals were and as we kind of move forward in some of those fronts. So yeah, that was the talk. We are, we are going to go to a biweekly schedule as well, and we'll be in the off weeks of school committee. So next Tuesday will be our first, will be another meeting at four o'clock.
Perfect. Okay. Our next meeting is on November 23rd. I don't remember if we have agenda items lined up. I'm pretty sure we do, but we'll get that to you. And so we'll start with school committee comments. Amy Lehman.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Kevin?
All set.
Amy Wall.
I just want to say, after hearing all the teachers tonight, a special thank you for all the work that they do throughout the year. You know, as parents, our kids just come home and know things, and I don't think we really think too much about what goes into that and the legwork and behind the scenes and everything like that. So with my older daughter, every year I always say, oh, we won the, the teacher jackpot again, but now I'm coming to realize that Wakefield just has a lot of really great teachers, that we're not hitting the jackpot every year. Everybody wins the jackpot every year. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that they put in tonight and every day. So that's it.
Thanks. Mike?
There's a great concert on Friday that will, Kevin and I will reach out, I think, to all of us. With, I know Doug and I are both going at Galvin, so it'll be nice to actually sit in Galvin again and watch an event as well, so if you're.
Oh, is it Friday or Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
Both days.
Both days. Yeah. That's it.
Steven?
Yeah. So altogether now is the name of the production?
Thank you.
We'll be going Saturday. Hopefully, the kids stay up. And also, the youth council is doing a cleanup on Thursday, Veterans Day, at I believe two to 3:30 at a number of places around town. You could reach out to them. They're, they'd like everyone to show up, all ages. And it's not just them, it's a number of, of youth sort of committees and councils throughout town. Just a great initiative, and I applaud their, you know, their work. That's just a great event, so hopefully a lot of folks will show up.
Tom?
I'm all set. Thank you.
And I was going to also mention the high school theater production and the cleanup. One note on the cleanup is I believe it's happening at the Galvin Courts Veterans Field and then the Upper and the Lower Common, and that the DPW is going to provide, I think, gloves and the trash bags and the whole nine yards. So you really just need to have your kids show up. And, and it was interesting, because my husband sent me a text earlier tonight saying, I just rode by the Galvin, and it's just like really embar, it's really embarrassing, like this trash problem that, that we have at our schools. And I said, I wrote back, I said, you know, I think, my hope is that this event of getting kids out to clean up their own trash in the places where they hang out may make a difference for kids to think a little bit harder about what they're doing on their property if they're also cleaning it up. And not as a punishment, but as a, wow, I didn't, I didn't realize that we were being such slobs, right? So I, I think my hope is that that's kind of the outcome of what happens with the event on, on Thursday. And I know there's a lot of my, my friends' parents, kids or teenagers, who are absolutely going to have their kids participate. I think it's a great.
Part of the reason why it's messy is because soccer's over now. Used to be someone was there all the time.
He was cleaning it up.
So they need to clean it up. So nobody's there now, so it's accumulating.
I would also say not to, you know, say it's, that the kids don't have some responsibility, but there are seagulls that.
Pick up trash and take it over there?
They totally, they totally do. So I think the town may look at putting like covers on the, and that might help. Fingers crossed.
And I'll just end with, you know, it was a long night of, but important information that I think was really good for us to hear and to hear it together as looking at MCAS scores, but also kind of tying kind of what we're seeing in our results, regardless of kind of how valid they are, their, their results, right? And we know what our results look like in, before COVID. And to be able to look at those and kind of get perspective and think, and then hear from our leaders kind of what they're doing and what the plan is, I think it was, it was important. It was, it was a lot, but it was an important presentation. So I think everybody who was involved in kind of the work to get that done. So do we have a motion to close out this meeting?
I make a motion that we, that, that we adjourn the meeting of Tuesday, November 9, 2021.
Motion now made and seconded? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.